I can, can you hear me?
Yes, perfect.
I hope that this, I hope I'm not on the big screen in HD.
You're like a third of the screaming.
On your little box.
Where's your town crier outfit?
Certainly it should get you right in.
Let's try this again. I'll put my phone number, but I'll do that this time. Oh, you didn't have, I don't know that.
I was never able to figure this out, so if you're able to do it, Jonathan.
All right, and we don't want your, I want something other than my.
I would say don't, don't do your.
All right, accept, accept the terms of use.
Register.
That should. All right, login, take you right in. See, and then I get this, oh, you know what? BPS. No, I've closed out of that. I did it, and it automatically tapped me in. So this is my working, yeah, but I'm out of that, because if I were in that, I can imagine it wouldn't let me join, but I'm not. Perfect, thank you. All right, I was hoping to share my screen, but.
You're here, Steve, right?
Yes, just because I'm.
Who are we missing?
Six, somebody.
Anne's online, um, so we're good. Safety. Login. I don't even know what that means. All right, I'm just gonna, I was gonna log into like, share my screen and type notes while we're doing this, but I'm not gonna do that. All right, why don't folks, if folks wanna grab, uh, grab some food before we get started.
I did notice, I like to bring your own vessel.
Go ahead, you're a monitor. Yeah, I thought, I was like, did Julie drop that for sharing?
That was in train.
That was, that was it, was absolutely like a reflex reaction. Since you asked.
You're acknowledging yet?
Anne, I'm just excited that you're joining us before it's midnight London time.
I know, I'm tired.
I am.
Anne, your fabric looks so posh.
Ah, well, not really.
Did it work for you, Mike? Did it work for you? So it's just me?
Oh, I've got his water.
Oh, I thought you meant the internet, but.
Yeah, right. Watched a bit of the game last night, I don't curiosity.
You know, though, I kinda like the heat, I gotta say, literally beat us, I kinda like them. You know, they.
They won anything yet?
Well, they tied up one, one.
One, one.
Are they?
Yep.
All right. Well, since we have our quorum, I'm gonna call this meeting to, uh, to order. So thank you, everyone, welcome to our, uh, our annual retreat. You know, just in terms of sort of setting expectations for what we're doing today. You know, this is really a less formal meeting, we don't have, you know, the same kind of formal items on the agenda that we typically would. But really, the purpose of today is to, you know, sit down and identify our working priorities for, uh, the current, coming year. So what do we hope to accomplish? What are the things that we wanna focus on? What are the things that we wanna do? Um, and ultimately, what we talk about today is gonna form the basis of a lot of our agendas as we have our business meetings over the next 12 months. I know, you know, I, I sort of spoke with a lot of you individually, but you know, part of how I'd like to kind of organize the work today is to make sure that we're actually also not just setting priorities, but putting some tangible, actionable, concrete, uh, goals around each of those priorities as well. Uh, and I think that's important for two reasons, one is it'll help us make sure that we know what we're trying to achieve for the year. But it's also important because this year we do have another nuance of this, which is that the stuff that we talk about today also ends up feeding into the town administrator's performance review process, so, you know, having tangible goals is important. You know, what we're not planning to do today is to kind of look into and, and sort of spend a lot of time talking about, you know, our perspectives on different issues that we talk about, you know, coming up with solutions to some of the issues that we identify. This is really about getting the issues on the table, so that we have kind of a game plan going forward. And then we'll have plenty of time to, uh, to go through sort of solutions and discussion and debate, uh, as time goes on. Uh, and then, of course, obviously, we'll, we'll document what we're, what we're talking through here, uh, so that, you know, we're able to share that, you know, share that following this meeting, so that we're all kind of working off the same page. Any sort of questions, thoughts, Steve, anything you wanna add? Then I have an icebreaker.
Well, I think, I think go right on to the icebreaker.
All right, uh, Anne, anything, please also, Anne, shout out if you have anything you wanna add, just in case I. I, I miss your, uh, your hand. So one thing I've noticed with Zoom is that the, like, the raise hand feature on your screen, the color of it is very similar to your background, and so it was very. So again, please just shout out, uh, and we'll make sure we get you.
I will.
For Anne, since you're not with us tonight, since you're not with us tonight, you're the Queen of Kingdom, I brought two things in. This is a Ministry of Defense.
Oh, look at that.
Police that I had when I was stationed over there, and then this was the wig I wore when I had to go to Her Majesty's Court.
You did wear a wig?
So I brought those two things in honor of your being in the UK, not with us tonight.
I love that. Is that, is that gonna be a proposal, is that we should start wearing wigs?
I, I think that maybe what we're gonna do is we're gonna have whoever's speaking at our meetings put the wig on. Exactly, it'll be like passing the con. All right, uh, so icebreaker, just to, just to give, first of all, give us all kind of a couple of minutes to eat, but also, um, you know, just to kind of, you know, get us into more of a discussion and, uh, a, a little bit less formal of a, uh, of a conversation. I just had a couple of round robin questions that I wanted to go around the room to answer, just for a couple of minutes again, just to get us in the right frame of mind, so. I'm gonna start with the first one, uh, what is the best concert you've ever attended? And if I'm Steve Mayo, I'm guessing it might be a Steely Dan concert.
No, I've.
So I'm gonna let you start with this one, Steve.
I saw Steely Dan much later, like a year ago. I would say the best concert I saw was, uh, Zac Brown in, um, outdoor venue in, uh, Virginia. Absolutely fabulous.
I haven't been to a ton of concerts, but probably my favorite is Eric Clapton, which was my first concert in college, in DC.
Where did you see him?
In DC, can't remember what the name of the stadium even was back then.
Probably RFK.
I think it was RFK, I think it was RFK, yeah, dates me.
What about you, Mike?
Uh, Rich Stadium, Orchard Park.
I was gonna say in Orchard Park, New York, where I used to live.
Also Buffalo, AKA Buffalo, New York. Third gun, nineteen seventy-six. Four, four band lineup. Donovan, um, Outlaws, Bob Skeeter, and the Rolling Stones.
Wow, that's quite the concert.
It was, it was an old day, but.
Yeah. I do appreciate you referring to Rich Stadium, which is what it was when I lived in Orchard Park, New York, many years ago. Bob.
Senior class trip, April nineteen seventy-eight, saw Billy Joel in concert at Saturday Night Live.
Wow.
The other Sunday like that, when there's only a couple hundred people. And to see Billy Joel, who was still pretty new. Concert, Chevy Chase was the guest host that night, 'cause he had left the show after season one, but he came back and he was, but all those guys, John Belushi was, I think all of them were there.
Awesome. We don't actually need to go around and order them, just calling on people.
Probably Pearl Jam in London at Wembley.
Oh, that's cool.
Probably Springsteen in DC.
Ooh, I think I should go see that.
Where, uh, where'd you see him?
Where in DC?
RFK Stadium, I actually saw him three times that one summer.
Oh, my gosh.
New York in Gillette. And then DC.
Were you following him?
And people just kept on getting tickets, so I went, it was like two thousand and four, two thousand and three.
Awesome. So I will say mine, so tomorrow Marie and I are going to see Gustar at Symphony Hall with the BSO, and Gustar is, for those who don't know, a band that got their start at Tufts. So we've seen them a number of times, but a couple of years ago, um, they were doing their twenty-fifth anniversary shows, they had a set of four shows at the Paradise. And we went to one of the shows and they basically just said, they're like, you know, this is kind of like, we had special guests for the other three, but this one, it's just us, we decided to do something different. So they made this like spinning wheel, kind of like, you know, the, like, the Wheel of Fortune wheel. And so each, like, thing on the wheel had either a different song, or they'd like take a request from the audience, or they'd take a request, do you remember Vivian Valenzuela at Tufts? So she followed them, so she was in the audience, they had one that was like Viv's Choice. And so literally every song, they spun the wheel and just did whatever it came up with, and it was also stuff like, you know, we'll do a song at like double time, we'll do a song at halftime, um, they like would invite people up to like play, you know, play the guitar, and it was, it was the most funny and kind of organic and kind of just enjoyable concert I think I've ever been to. Anne.
Let's see, I would say, I haven't gone to that many concerts, the sad thing is, I'm thinking of all the concerts I wish I've gone to, like Bruce Springsteen or Cher, um, but I guess Elton John. He played for a solid like three and a half hours, no break.
Wow.
Yeah, it was really amazing.
All right. My next question, worst job you've ever had, Steve, you can't answer this one, I mean, you could. I'll kind of kick it off.
I would say washing cars at, uh, one twenty-eight car rental down on North End.
What made it so bad?
Oh, it was just, you'd have to show up, maybe they had cars, maybe they didn't, it was the rental cars when they came in, so you never really knew, um, the pay was lousy, it was just hot and crappy, but I was young, I was sixteen, so it wasn't bad.
My worst job was I worked in the circulation department of our local newspaper, and I, that was my summer job in college. And I had to be in there on Saturday and Sunday mornings at five AM. So it started with paper carriers not getting their newspapers dropped off where they were supposed to be, and then it quickly went into customers calling because their papers either didn't get delivered or it was not delivered appropriately, so I used to get complaints at five, between five and twelve on Saturday and Sunday, so didn't do too much to, wasn't so great for somebody who's in college to have to be at work at five AM on a on a Saturday and a Sunday.
Hmm, I was probably working in the registrar's office in college, just so boring and so much paper that had to be filed.
All those trees.
All those trees, it was pre, you know.
That's where it started, Julie.
Exactly, might be.
Everything in triplicate.
Exactly.
So my worst was working at Market Basket for one summer, um, when I was in high school. And the previous summer I had worked in, I had worked for a contractor, which that was like bad enough, is, you know, it's like on these like ninety-five degree days, you know, crawling into crawl spaces to do insulation and just all this like miserable work. But Market Basket was worse, and, uh, part of what made it worse was they had very like gender segregated roles, and so like if you were a teenage boy, you did bagging groceries in carriages, if you were a teenage girl, you worked the register. And I just remember sitting there in days, like, just bagging groceries and watching these people work the register, and it's like, they just made their incorrect change, like, they, you know, tied that in wrong. It was ju, it was so like frustrating because it's like, oh my God, like, no, you did that wrong, you didn't add that number. So, yeah, I ended up leaving that job to take a, to take a lower paying job, I mean, I was making five twenty-five an hour, but I ended up leaving that job to take a job for four seventy-five an hour, 'cause I hated working there as so much. Anyone else?
My gosh, I have a whole list.
It's hard to decide. I had, um, a number of summer jobs, a number of years I worked for painting companies. And it wasn't all bad, I did a lot of interior work. Although sometimes, and back in the day, they had all the sanding sealers and everything, got you hot, so with closed windows so the dust wouldn't kick up on the new wood if you would wind up three sheets to the wind before you left work, but.
No masks or anything at that?
Oh, heck no, none of you, you guys wouldn't touch some of the stuff we did. Two particular situations, one was degreasing tire machines at, I don't know if it was Goodrich, it was in Lockport, New York, and actually using alkaline with gloves, skimpy gloves, and having holes burn through my fingers and winding up going to the eye doctor because my contacts.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, I wound up getting some, uh, corneal ulcers for a while, but fortunately, that all passed. The other one was being at the top of a four-story building, and I didn't like heights. With another guy who was telling me about all the problems he had as a, you know, as a youth, and he was the guy, when I kicked off the roof, grabbed my foot and put it on the ladder that almost extended the length of the four stories, so. Fear, fear and, 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 and I, August was, uh, was pretty good in that business, so, yeah.
You're basically lucky you're still with us.
I am, I am, it's good to be white, it's good to be white collar.
Yeah.
Times, yes, definitely.
I was a nanny like one summer, and I, her two really spoiled girls. Where'd they live? They lived in, um, I feel like it was like Redding, North Redding, and they just, they went, they went to like our private school with like eight other kids, so they just didn't specialize very well. It was bad, but it paid really well.
That's good.
I had to do construction, 'cause my dad thought it was good at fifteen and sixteen to go work construction, so July, you understand, Julie, Charles County, St. Mary's County, the humidity, once, like you, under the crawl space, you know, insulation, I'm sure has asbestos in it. No mask, nothing like that, I was at a work site one day by myself, put a nail through the bottom of my foot. Hobbled my way to a, to a house that had somebody living there, a young woman with a baby, she let me wash off my foot with the outside hose. And then I had to drive myself to the hospital with a stick shift truck, and I had to use both feet and got myself to the hospital. And my mom said to my dad, okay, he's done, he's not working that anymore.
This life lesson is.
And my dad said, absolutely not, he's gonna continue through the rest of the summer. Then I didn't have to work construction again.
Yeah.
I truly have not had the job I have enjoyed, I'm trying to think about it for real, I like, I love my summer jobs, like, in college, high school.
Really?
Yeah, I, paper routes and stuff, yeah, I.
I'm gonna give you one for your, since you don't have one to share, I'm gonna tell you one that was also awful, this was not me, but I worked at the library, at one of the libraries at Tufts a couple summers. And one summer we hired someone whose entire job was to shelf read, which means like literally going from the beginning of the stacks and reading, you know, checking like the the Library of Congress tag on every book to make sure it's in order, and that was what this person did for eight hours a day, five days a week for the entire summer.
That's when AI comes in handy.
Yeah. All right.
All right.
I have more questions, but we can move on. All right, so let's move on, um, let's start by, uh, going through goals and priorities, so. Excuse me, I, um, I don't know if there's anyone who wants to kind of volunteer to go first, I know I had asked everyone to kind of put some thought into this. Uh, so if someone wants to, uh, kick it off, they're welcome to, otherwise I'll pick on someone.
Happy to volunteer.
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
I, I sent four items to Jonathan. My first was kind of a double item, and it is to move forward two building projects, one being The Herd and the other being Butler Ave. And always throwing in a little, you know, what do I see on these places? We're not deciding everything tonight, but, you know, I'd like to see Butler Ave as a combination of, uh, open space and if we can make the numbers work, hundred percent modern income and disabled. And modern income would be, um, some senior, some all ages and some disabled, uh, housing. I don't know if the numbers will work. I just throw that out there. The herd, I think, would be more what Steve has talked about in the past, you know, market rate. Town would probably make some money on that one. As an adjunct to that, I thought, where are we going to put the friends? And I would like to see the friends of BB go someplace. They say that I need an elevator. Well, the whole second floor of the senior center is unoccupied and there's an elevator. So it just suggests that as an, as an item. Second thing I, I brought up to Jonathan is just specifically continue to visit and revisit what we've spent, what we've spent it on, what we're very band of seven, um, trying to maybe allocate or reallocate and make sure that it's some specific somewhere the money's gone and what money is left and what we're gonna do with that money. Didn't have everything naturally committed before the legislature takes it away from us or before the feds take it away from us. Steve may be nervous at his most recent.
No, I thought that would have made you feel better.
You did. You made me nervous. You do this to me. Made me nervous and then you made me feel better. And the third one was just, uh, and Jonathan alluded to it, we apparently had the idea a little bit separately, which was relative to the good work that he involved did last year to try to put a little more meat on less aimed at Steve, but for future, uh, objective reasons, some objective criteria in terms of, okay, if we say we're gonna do, for example, five million, you know, five miles of roads and we only do three, why did that happen? You know, something that we can have, I've called it honest budgeting, the oxymoron of honest budgeting. But this is more an honest, honest attempt to say, in this year, here's what we realistically hope to accomplish and tie that into the, um, more likely, more pertinent to a future administrator to tie in some more objective criteria. I did find going through it this year, it seemed to be, I have fifteen CJs at work, critical job elements, they're all mushy. I mean, none of them are objective. Um, so I get that, this, you know, sometimes you have that in, in reviews. But here, I think there's no congressional prohibition like there is on us, uh, on talking about actual numbers and stuff. So I, I think that would be a good thing. The fourth was pop-ups. I was over at the high school, talking to some, um, kids in one of the classes over there last Thursday. I sat and watched the traffic on the Hunt Street for a half hour before I went in. Um, and when I was over there, they, they were saying, you know, I can't, it was really kind of funny. Um, one of the kids said, well, why can't we find a builder that will just take a building and do all the right things with it? There was space in there and I said, well, because that's kind of hard to, kind of hard to find that because people want to make the profit.
Basically the goal of what we.
Yeah, but, you know, maybe we can do more of these, um, events, maybe food trucks over, you know, maybe we subsidize, maybe we don't, you know, just things where we can do some more of that. I know Julie's mentioned, I know you've all thought about it, but, um, and maybe we use some ARPA funds to give people a little good time and a little, little more free space or space where they consider the table as opposed to just, you know, throwing down a blanket or not having a place to go. And one of the spots I was thinking of was over there, Past Veterans Field, the trees in the park over Past Veterans Field. Obviously not a, not to compete with the farmer's market, but, you know, that might be an area where we could get some trucks in early and I'm sure there are other areas, but that was my number four. That's it. That's what I said in a nutshell.
Awesome. So I'm gonna say this back, just to, I've been kind of taking notes. And again, you know, I will kind of document all of this and probably clean up some of my misspelling as I'm particularly typing, typing and get this out. And I should mention, what I'm, what I'm also doing is kind of taking notes in kind of the context of our, our vision statement as a town. So, you know, we, we've kind of talked about, you know, connecting kind of vision to priorities down to specific goals. So that's how we're, I'm gonna try to kind of frame all of this. So I've got Mike, uh, first of all, under welcomes and supports residents in different life stages and inviting to people of all backgrounds. I have a priority of the herd school with a goal, it sounds like of, of, you know, kind of having, you know, a plan identified for market rate units at that site.
But for the usual eighteen, twenty percent, whatever we, what we require.
Got it. Uh, any sense of timing on that one? I mean, obviously not for development, but just in terms of moving forward.
I'd ask Steve his opinion on that. I would think in the next six to twelve months, trying to make some real progress over there. Butler's, Butler is high priority for me, too.
Bear in mind that both developments, to use that word, would need to go to town meeting.
Yep.
So you might want to say spring of two thousand twenty-four.
And Butler still needs DEP plan.
Yeah, but that's almost there.
Okay.
All right. So I'm gonna say plan identified for market rate units at that site with plan for presentation at town meeting in two thousand twenty-four.
Spring, right?
Spring?
Eight. I mean, I don't want to ever push everything too far out, you know?
Yep. All right. And so say, uh, under the same, uh, vision statement, we've got Butler Ave, uh, combination of open space and a hundred percent modern income disabled, uh, units. Uh, and again, I think similar thing of presentation for town meeting in that same timeframe.
I know that Bill had said you were looking at trying, which was, you did it sometime in fall, but that doesn't mean you're going to town meeting by fall, right?
Right.
Or might it? Might, is that too aggressive, Steve?
Fall feels a little aggressive.
We'll have to also explore to what extent the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees is going to be involved in this process. We don't even have that set up yet.
Yep.
That's true, too.
Yeah, we're talking about a sale. Are we talking, we have things we need to flesh out. Are we talking a sale? Are we talking about a retention?
So part of, I would say, Mike, your goal would be to get the certificate of trust set up for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and then trustees. Those are two steps in that process.
I didn't make that a specific goal because I think that, that flows from a later on.
So I'm gonna actually put that as a separate goal because I do think that that's.
That was one of mine.
Related, but also separate. So Bob, why don't you talk about that for a second, then we'll, we'll come back to stating some of yours.
Yeah, so on that, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we've got next steps now that it passed the town meeting. So the goals for that is, number one, we, as the town council, have to sign the certificate of trust. Get some ideas from other municipalities, ask Tom, and Steve, we can reach out to Reading and some of the other areas, Melrose. So we have three months, since it passed at town meeting, it's three months before the attorney general approves our bylaws. So during these three months, what we can be doing conceivably is advertising for those positions. Perhaps once we set up the liaisons tonight or when we set them up, each person who's a liaison to one of the committees, commissions or boards, that's going to have a spot on the, um, trust, can talk to them about the Council on Aging, Housing Authority, and so on and so forth. And then we can start advertising for the three at-large positions that we have as well. And the goal would be to get that set up by the end of the summer because that's when the attorney general will come back and approve all of our bylaws, including the one that was just passed at town meeting concerning the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So that would be part of, of, um, the goals for setting up the.
Got it.
Trust, which then would lead to some of the, uh, the ideas that Mike had.
Got it. And do the trustees have to be named? Help me under, uh, think through the timing. The certificate of trust and the naming of the trustees, does that happen simultaneously or do you need the?
You can do the certificate of trust first.
Okay.
And then you can set up your board at any time after that. You have to file the certificate of trust as well.
Got it. All right. So I'm gonna write down certificate of trust approved and trustees named by fall of two thousand twenty-three.
That's, that's good.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the housing trust?
Please.
Do, do we as a council have input in terms of what kind of housing we're talking about? And who we want to create this for, for? And should part of that come from the master plan findings?
So would that factor into how we develop the certificate of trust?
I think it would, potentially.
I think it would. And we also retained, the way that it was drafted was to give us the town council the authority to create the language in the trust as opposed to delegating that to the board of trustees. We specifically retain that ability for us to do it. So to answer your first part of your question, Anne, we would be the ones to develop what we wanted to put in there as far as whatever. Development, helping first-time home buyers with, you know, getting help with closing costs with some of that seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars money that's already in there, helping renters that need, uh, assistance with, um, repairs on their homes. There's a myriad of things that it can be used for. We're just gonna have to sit down as a deliverer body and try to figure out what we want to put in that trust.
And I believe some of the written materials that indicated we could do something like a declaration of, I forget the exact terminology, but we could lay out what our vision is in terms of what we'd like.
For the board, yeah.
Yeah, to be done for categories, if you will.
So Anne, on your second question, um, uh, remind me of the timeline for the master plan, just again, thinking about putting these pieces together. Oh, and you're muted. Or we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, yep.
I've got it on with my headphones. The master plan should be the first draft of it that will have input and then the community will have input is going to be happening fairly soon. It should be any moment. Do you know, Steve?
I thought it was late June when the first, I thought late June is when the first, the first draft was coming out.
Yeah.
But if we have a timeline of fall for the declaration of trust, we should be able to incorporate the master plan into whatever we decide for that.
Yeah, I, I think that would be, I think that would be good to make sure that we do incorporate that. And then I think also that we as a council maybe want to kind of have, I know I have some, some, um, thoughts on what I'd like to see in terms of housing, housing needs and, and how we can kind of create a vibrant housing community through this.
Okay, let's come back to that. Um, okay, but I know we, I know we're bouncing around a little bit. Let me finish, Mike, yours, and then, uh, we can, um, you know, make sure we capture everything. So then I've got, uh, under improved business districts with more services, retail job opportunities and pedestrian amenities. I don't know if that's the right place, but we'll stick it there for now. Uh, I have pop-ups to promote economic development and downtown vitality, food trucks, placemaking, et cetera. Uh, the goal being identification of a location and schedule for pop-up events.
I think it would make sense if we identified what, what, what it was we were hoping to do over the course of the next few months.
Okay.
I'm su, I'm sure we have to get certain permissions and whatnot. Leave that to Steve and Sharon.
All right. Um, I've got under expanding social civic and cultural landscape, uh, a location for the Friends of the BB Library book sale, uh, with the goal of evaluating the second floor of the senior center.
It's just one idea.
Yeah.
I thought because of the elevator and the lack of use up there, it might be workable.
And then under investing in legacy civic projects, uh, continued reevaluation of ARPA funds. I think the goal there is continue to have all funds, the goal of having all funds committed by the, the federal deadline.
Can I just ask a little question on that? Um, Steve, because I think about this some more. Is there a reason that we can't move, say, like all of health over to the second floor of the senior center?
I'd have to have our guys look at that, but there probably is no technical reason. There might be a physical reason, but I, but no, there's no reason why we could.
Just, I just know that they, I, we were trying to like find space for them, you know, next door. And I, it just, I just got thinking about it and like, I like the idea too of health being closer to seniors, too. Like on, you know, top of things and then veterans, too. And I, I just, it's.
Kind of one-stop shopping for.
Kind of a little bit. I mean, not that health is related to, you know, our senior population, but it just seemed like that was like allowed for them to kind of have like a standalone space. In that way, I, I wasn't sure if we had any impediments that would prevent us from doing that versus where they are now.
That's an easy one to check out.
One thing to think about is the transit piece of that. I mean, it kind of stinks, right? Because like, it would be nice to have something that was transit accessible for seniors, which we don't really right now, but just thinking about like, you know, Jason and, just something to, I think, let, let's look into it, but I, I feel like that's something we should think about as well as we evaluate some of those questions.
I'm wondering too, because I had asked, you know, Steve a while back, well, gee, what about that second, unusual second floor for senior housing? And there was a concern about, I don't know how much construction this would involve or build out, that there was concern about the people on the first floor not being happy about what's going on in the second.
I think that mix may be a little bit different than using another town office. We might run into some different code issues, too. You know?
But we can evaluate that.
So Ed, I'm gonna put this under, um, welcoming and supporting residents in different life stages, evaluation of.
I just want to go on one of my priorities because I don't use it one of my tokens.
You can.
Feedback? I mean, I know, I don't want to debate, but I also just like getting other ideas, you know? I, I also want to, like, the pop-up food truck idea is great. We've debated it before. Business, it's not great for businesses, right? And so they don't like that. So like, I want to be careful when we say what pop-up means because to me, I want to do more of what Paul's doing in Melrose of empty storefronts that they're letting people rent. And like, maybe we get one of those businesses and people can, you know, use the kitchen and sell brownies or, they have a thing called the Loop in Melrose that's, you can rent like strollers and baby seats and rent bike maintenance. And there's one other, children toys, all in one building. Three of them manage it. It's called the Loop. You should check it out. Like, their website's great. But like, I'm thinking more of that when I think pop-up, not necessarily food trucks by the farmer's market, just like the businesses will destroy us if we try to do that. So just want to be mindful.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think if we were competing with businesses downtown, it would probably be a little bit different than helping to set something up in another location that isn't sort of, I mean, there's gas and light and a park. I mean, you're not competing with the downtown businesses per se, but I, I don't have any problem with considering.
I, I just think we'd have to be considerate.
I think identification maybe of the strategy as well, because I, I think, you know, this is a question of sort of what, what are our goals for doing this? And why and where and how? I mean, to me, that all goes into having a plan around pop-ups. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I think like an economic development plan.
Yeah. All right. And Ed, I won't take up one of your slots with your.
I mean, it's a priority, but I don't want to put up one of your.
Fair enough.
But, uh, we had talked, Mike, about the idea and I don't think it's, it's not necessarily, they're not mutually exclusive. We could, for example, have a couple like trucks, um, in conjunction with Plaza Jazz. And maybe it's like, like a taco truck or something, things like that, that, that aren't really directly competing with Public Kitchen or, you know, any, any place still in LA.
I've been to parties with these taco trucks. They're great. Some of them are great.
So if we thought about something that was not a quizzing that, that we felt off for some to think about.
All right. Uh, and then just the last one, Mike, I had under our, um, you know, kind of a generic sort of government operations and public services type category, I put concrete goal setting for the year, which I, I think, you know, this is the, the time to do that. All right. Great. Bob, since we started going through yours, do you want to go next?
Okay, I'll start with a pretty basic one. It's improving volunteerism in town, getting more people to volunteer for our boards, commissions and committees. If you look at page fifty-four of the Vision twenty thirty statement, there are people that were polled gave four reasons why they're not involved in volunteering in town. One was not sure how to get involved. One was the time of the meetings. The third one is they weren't aware of the scheduled meetings. And, but the one that was the one that troubled me the most was a third of the responders said their involvement wouldn't make a difference. And that troubled me that we had a third of the people that responded to the poll to say that they thought their involvement wouldn't make a difference in town. So I don't know what we can do, but I think, and, and we, I've been in this process one year, you all have been here much longer. But you see, some of this, some people in town are volunteering for two or three or four of our boards. And it'd be nice to get other folks involved in the process. I don't have the answers to how to get them. I don't have the answers to how to get them more involved in it, but I think that's something that we can direct our attention to in the coming year as one of our goals.
So the goal maybe being to develop like an engagement plan around recruiting for.
Yeah, something like that. The Wakefield 101, I know back in the day, Wakefield 101, a lot of the different boards, when I was on the Human Rights Commission, we had, you know, one of the tables, we had things on display and an email list where people could sign up. And they had that the other day at the Pride Flag. They had it, you know, you could go and sign up for, to get email distributions, but still, you know, we're seeing a dearth of people applying for our boards. Sometimes we have to go back and repeat the emergency to get people to volunteer to serve. I already talked about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Another one that's preordained for me, because Jonathan asked me to stay on the bylaws review committee, is zoning bylaws. And I can tell you, there's going to be a lot of movement on zoning bylaws in the coming year. In fact, I'm missing a meeting tonight where the expert has come up with a list of definitions, improved definitions, updated definitions of zoning terms. There's been a lot of movement made on zoning bylaws, which for both, I would anticipate for this fall and for next spring, you're going to see a litany of zoning bylaws come up for town meeting. So that's going to be a big, um, big party. I think that in that situation too, it would behoove us to have Dan Lieber and people from the Bylaw Review Committee come and brief us prior to town meeting of these changes. And I, I'm not sure how the budget works on this, Steve, with Mark, the gentleman that we hired out of conference, zoning law expert. But, um, perhaps we could have him even come to one of the town council meetings to kind of give us an overview. He's incredibly impressive person. Because we're going to get hit with a lot of questions from residents about these zoning bylaws changes. Um, another one I found was capital planning, and this has to do with my involvement last year with the fire department. I think that it's, it's also important for us to look down the road at expenditures that the town is going to have. Let's say over the next decade, I can tell you off the top of my head, the town's going to need a new ladder truck and two pumper trucks sometime over the next 10 years. Ladder truck is $2 million, pumper trucks are $1 million each. And all of them have a two-year backlog between the date when you order and the date you get delivery because of problems getting, um, supplies and whatnot. So that's something that we need to be cognizant of because near the end of this decade, the town's going to face a situation where it's going to need to make some big purchases.
And those are on the capital plan.
They are, yeah.
You can, you can go to the outlying years and see that. So there is a, it's updated every year.
What do we do with that? What's our role?
Well.
Vote yes.
Vote yes. Well. Hopefully, I mean, the, the bonds will be gone on the ones that we had before, before you go for a new one. Right? It's kind of like you had your car loan and then you have those few years, well, yes, I got no car loan. And then your car starts to break down and you need to get another car loan. That's exactly kind of what happened on those, but those are big ticket items.
Yeah.
We have, um, we have bonded those big ones in the past and they're usually a 10-year bond. So 700,000 for one is 70 grand a year. And your debt service, that's not going to kill us, assuming that something fell off that was lighted too. So there is a timing aspect.
So let me ask on this one, is there something different? So we, we've got kind of a capital planning committee. We've got a process to look at these. Is there, is there something different that we should be looking at? Is there more connection with the town council that we need to be thinking through? Help me. Let's kind of, I, I just want to tease out like what's the, what's the idea?
This is where my latter experience leads to questions. So, so I sat for a year with the fire department as the liaison and I got educated on the ladder truck and the pumper trucks. But then I wasn't sure what my role is to articulate that to somebody else, whether it's the town council or, or whatnot. And the fire department was a little bit different because the chief was out for a little while. So they got some of the stuff through, but for instance, their, their, um, their rescue boat is also dated, is from 1984. And that would have been an item that would have cost about 35, 40,000. That's something that I thought they could have put in this year, but they didn't. But then I didn't push that or anything with them. It's just my idea that perhaps they want to put that, something like that in. So I wasn't quite sure.
Maybe also an item we can get.
From the state.
From the state.
That's like a perfect earmark example.
So, so.
Or, or through the state without even going for an earmark, going through.
And like I said, I was just aware that these items are going to be coming up over the next decade.
Well, that's why you have a, a long-term capital plan. That's why the capital planning committee interviews each department head or deputy department head in those cases and goes through them. And it sometimes takes a few years to get your item on the agenda. One thing we look at on vehicles is maintenance costs. We see things breaking down all the time and that's the pretty good indication we need to, you know, increase the, speed up the process.
Right. So when you're looking at, for example, something bigger like a fire truck, you're going to be saying, well, we usually do two, two point four, whatever we do, million per year capital plan. If we bond that up, it's not going to be 2 million in one year and eat the whole budget.
Right.
So you're going to have it at 70 grand, 100 grand for that given year's allocation.
Right. Yeah, we, we may.
And it would carry forward.
Oh, you may do that as a completely separate article.
Yeah, I think that's what we did with the last.
That's the last one.
Last time.
Is that what we did with the water tower? Was that a separate?
That was a separate article.
That was a separate article.
Yeah.
Yeah.
However, you know, we've made a lot of, we've caught up on what we're talking about fleet. We've caught up on fleet because we had, everything was old and leased before. Now that's not the case. So is there a way within the capital plan that you could put kind of the bond payment within the capital plan? Yes, there may be. So those are things we can look at as we get, our capital gets a little bit better.
So I guess the response to you, Bob, I think is that it's good to bring these things up, but they're also probably being considered
Right.
by the chief, by the capital planning committee.
Geez, I feel we just, I feel we just bought that ladder truck. Taco so quick.
Three years ago?
Four years ago.
I thought it was, I thought it was my first or second year. Were you on? No, I was on when we did it. So maybe our second year.
So that would have been four years ago.
That was five years ago.
That may have been the pumper truck.
But the pumper came right after the ladder. Ladder's maybe a year older.
Right.
Yeah.
And the thing with the pumbers is, is for two of them relatively new. It's the other two that are pretty old.
Right.
Two, at least one is past his 20-year life expectancy.
Yeah.
Also, because we're not a Community Preservation Act community and we're not going to be at any point in time in the near future, we have to be a little more imaginative of how we're going to come up with resource, financial resources for some of these projects, like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We have that $760,000, but unlike other municipalities who are CPAs, we don't have that steady source of income coming in through the tax levy. So I, once again, and, and, and the board of, the, the, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, from Board of Trustees is going to be involved, I would imagine, in this process as well. That doesn't mean we can't also be involved with trying to come up with ways to finance some of these things. Melrose, for instance, has an Affordable Housing Trust Fund and when it was created, they had $0 in it. I think, and I don't know if Stonem had any money in there, was he there?
I don't think they had any.
Right. So some of them have it on paper, but they can't do anything with it. We're fortunate that we have three quarters of a million dollars to start with, but we're not going to have that steady stream of income coming in through the tax levy.
Yeah. So I, I'm going to suggest on that one, we add maybe as a goal around the Affordable Housing Trust, the development of almost like a funding plan for it.
Yeah, that's good.
Like a funding strategy.
And then the last one, and, and Steve, he said he was going to bring this in. When I got elected last year, I went to the town website and I saw that we had a financial policy and we had a bench instructors policy. And then since I got elected, we, we adopted a flag policy last June. And then a couple of weeks ago, we, we amended a public participation policy. I did not know we had an approved public participation policy until it came up recently, because that wasn't on the town website. What I'm looking for from a government operations standpoint is there is a, is there a comprehensive list of all prior approved select board or town council written policies? Because the charter says that we can develop these policies.
Correct.
But I get a little concerned when I'm not aware of prior approved policies that I can be looking at for guidance on how we, we take care of some of these situations. And, and I raise this now because the public participation came up. The public participation one was approved sometime back in 2009 when you prepared a 22-section document for the Board of Selectment. The Board of Selectment at that time decided not to approve 21 of those sections, which is fine, that's their prerogative. But they chose to approve section 22 as a standalone policy, public participation.
I think on a six to one vote too, as I recall.
So I, I'm looking to see if there's something that gives, gives us a list of all prior approved policies. We address an issue, we can say, oh, we already have a policy on this and this is what it says.
I think they're all up to date now, but we'll get that. And I'll, and I will give you the other policy too.
I don't think traffic calming policy is posted anywhere. Can you look into that?
Yeah. Is that a policy that's been adopted by the town council?
I looked back at our role.
Yes, see, that's a good idea. See, that's one I, and Tom Mullins and I had asked.
That was the, um, sorry, that, that was when Lieutenant Anderson came to us with the TAC policy in terms of getting like neighborhood signatures.
Okay, okay. All right, okay.
So maybe my request on this one is if, if we could get kind of a list of those policies circulated among the town council and maybe a circulation of the policies themselves and then just making sure that they're on the town council website.
Because we have a fleet policy too, as you know.
Yeah. So if we could just, if we could just make sure, I, I think this is probably less of a goal and more of a homework assignment, Steve, for you. But if we could make sure that those get circulated and posted and catalogued so that we're all working off of the same set of documents.
And I, and I am going to send to the town council for their consideration at a future date. I talked to the chief of vice chair today, an asset naming policy.
Yeah, Mullin asked me about that today over at Savings Bank, but he thought it was something that was being developed, not already approved.
Coming up for discussion.
Oh, no, it's not approved, Jim.
Right, yeah.
No, it's not approved.
Yeah, no, no, it's coming up for discussion. Yeah.
So right, those, those are my part.
Awesome. So I've got completion of the zoning bylaw review process with changes.
Unless somebody else wants to be on the bylaw review committee.
Well, we'll talk about that soon, but I, I, I think you, I, I don't think you're going to have to fight anyone off for that one. So goals for that one are proposed changes to go in front of the fall, 2023 and spring 2024 town meetings and the bylaw review committee to brief town council prior to those town meetings. Sorry, let me scroll up. We added some context around the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in terms of the timing and also the development of the funding plan
Yeah.
for 2023. And then I, I think we're looking at the, the capital planning process as just part of current state and, and sort of the policies as, as something, again, less of a goal, but more of a, a homework assignment for Steve.
And the volunteers.
Oh, yes, thank you. I have that. Where did I put that? Oh, here we go. Yep. Getting more people to volunteer to boards, committees and commissions, so developing an engagement plan. What do you think of the timing on that one? By year end?
Well, we do most of our appointments in April.
Yeah.
So I think by the end of the year is good because then we can be advertising in the early part of 2024 to get folks to volunteer and be assigned in April.
Great.
April 2024.
Awesome. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Thanks for the reminder. Sorry, I did have that. I just scrolled past it. All right. Who's next?
I'll go. So I'll say like the top three in like no particular order.
Well, you only have two. Did you already use one?
No, he gets, that's fine. I did say three to five, but.
My top three in no particular order are downtown revitalization, downtown revitalization and downtown revitalization. So those are, that's really like my primary like focus. I've been working a lot with Bill Renaud and Joe Conway, Steve Akakinda, et cetera, on that. Obviously, that's the Envision project, but also working with Aaron on economic development opportunities and Steve as well. So they're all, I mean, they're all interconnected right down to the signed bylaw review committee, which Steve, we just have to wrap that up.
Yeah.
And we talked about that, you know, with the, the folks who are on that.
Is that still outstanding?
It's technically still outstanding, but it's, it, it was like on the one yard line just before COVID hit and then
Okay.
it kind of, it didn't, it didn't disband, but.
Is that weight finding or is that different?
No, it's, um, uh, commercial signage.
Like making it like.
That's right. That's right.
Just streamlining it, so making it much easier for the businesses to come into town, but also, you know, having an aesthetic that is not like, you know, backlit boxes and things of that nature. So I think that's, that's all kind of interconnected. An offshoot of that relates to the, um, to focusing on the Albion arts corridor. And obviously, and that is the Ace Building itself, but I think we have the the infrastructure now, I'll say on Albion, with the way that it's designed now, I think we need now need facade improvement and economic development on that street. And I think a lot of that can be in conjunction with reintegrating the, the Ace Building at the same time. So I think there's a lot of interactivity there. But I think you have to see that as a real vibrant, like, opportunity.
All right. Can I pause you for a second?
Sure, can.
So I've heard a couple of things in there. So, um, and again, just thinking about specific goals. So the Envision project, so goal, where our next stage is the 25% design. So that, that's kind of the goal that we're talking about by.
Oh, that, no, that would be by, I'd say by early fall because it'll probably be late summer that we have that meeting. So by early fall.
Okay. And then what's our, is there another sort of next step beyond? I mean, I know obviously eventually the 100% design phase, but like what, what's the next step in terms of getting us from there to the 2026 and 2028 tip list?
That's like mostly, I mean, that's mostly it. It's, it's for the refinements. It's kind of like autopilot at that point, once you get beyond the 25%. There are like some, I mean, great, Steve, there, I mean, there are a few things we have to do, just, we don't really have the issues in terms of easements and things like that, but that's when it all gets sorted out between 25 and 100. But we're pretty fortunate that way. There's not a lot of, it, it, it's more just a matter of then refining that design.
Got it.
And zoning in on that. And then also working hard with the, like, MPO as well and trying to have a presence there to make sure that we can get up higher on the list too with, you know, with, with the state, which I think we can do frankly, because we're so much better equipped than most of the other projects. So I think that will be accelerated.
Yeah.
But like with that, and something I think we need to, when I mentioned facade improvements, I'd like to be able to see a public-private partnership with some of the banks on that, but I'd also like us to consider some, perhaps some matching grants with some of the ARPA funds too, because facade improvements are transformative for the, the aesthetic of the downtown, which is, you know, we're trying to make the heart of our community, I would say. And I, and I think that there's, there's value in that. So if you do some matching grants or something along those lines. Same with, we talked about with signs too, especially new businesses coming to town, you know, giving them some points, for example, some, some credit points. You know, there's, it's all kind of related.
Got it. So, okay. Sorry, I tried to get off of this. So Envision, we talked about signed bylaw committee, basically completing the work of that committee.
Yeah, well, and, and as having an online manual that will be
Yep.
like have illustrations and a how-to guide that makes the process much more streamlined than it is currently. And we're basically, Steve, when you say we're like on a half-year line at this point.
Yeah, we are. And Jim McBane actually handed me a whole completed document.
All right. Yeah, because I was talking with him a couple of weeks back in the office and he said, you know, because he was kind of the one that was
Yeah.
putting the final touches on that.
Got it. So we've got that. We've got facade improvements, including bank partnerships and matching grants from ARPA funds and then, you know, increased programming and vitality, I guess, at, at Ace.
Yeah, which I think then flows into the rest of Albion.
Yeah.
Certainly. And I think that's going to encourage a lot of other kind of art, art and cultural based like endeavors there. And also, you know, maybe we'll get a coffee shop or whatever, something that's open nearby, anything.
All right.
But that building is really, like, we all know it's underutilized and, and I'd like to see a little bit of, like, investment in that to, to see what else we can do there.
Great.
And then I'll just put a slide, I'll just have this as an addendum. I think our, we, we have a far more robust roads program. I think we're going to have to go back to town meeting again. Probably see, what do we have? Two years left, I think.
Yeah, we have another quarter, quarter, 2.5 million that we haven't borrowed on the first round yet.
So that, as we, because TPW now can accelerate at a faster pace and that coupled with, with trees as well.
So acceleration of the road repair program. So basically the next step there.
My idea, do I have to say it?
No, I think you should.
I've got trees too.
Hang on, I want to come back to trees in a second. So acceleration of the road repair program. So we're talking about the, bringing the remaining two and a half million.
Uh, no, you don't need to bring that to town meeting. That's already been approved.
Oh, got it. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think what Ed was saying is that when. I think what Ed was saying is that when that runs out, we may have to go back for the next.
And trying to accelerate our schedule for the two and a half minute current.
Gotta have, because we now are at a, we have a better rhythm now going back, so we can.
Yeah, I think this summer you'll see a lot of.
And it's gonna, and it's costing us less in the long run if we can get tackle this sooner. Obviously, with the, with the multiple transportation, that's a part of that.
All right, trees, it sounds like you have trees, you've got trees, why don't we focus on trees for a second?
I want a tree process.
Explain to me what we mean by that.
What I've been asking for, for six months, you know, when a tree's gonna go down, that it's marked, that we know why, that there's enough time for people to comment, that we have a plan for a replacement. I just, I'm still getting calls, the trees are going down without being, without notification. So, and in general, I want more investment in trees, but I think we're doing a good job on that, and I think everybody agrees on that, but I really, and maybe this is more of a homework assignment than.
No, it's probably both.
But.
I put on both lists.
I want a process.
And this is minor, but something that I think would fall under trees. Medford last weekend did a pollinators project, like a community project, where they planted like flowers on like all the shared medians and sidewalks to get bees, and it was like this community event, and I think that would be really great. I'll send you the, it was on Facebook, but it was called the Pollinators Project in Medford, and they, it was a planting day of wildflowers, and I think, you know, yes to more trees, yes to a process when trees come down, but I also think as we're talking about climate change and sustainability, I think pollinators, like, how cool if some of these, you know, in between where we don't have trees or the trees that come down, we do wildflowers. I hear almost every day how much people like the wildflowers that we planted by the tennis court. I think we should think about doing it on sidewalks or other areas, like, it doesn't always need to be a big tree, right? I think we should think about wildflowers or bushes that'll pollinate, so that, I would love to see a plan from Vincent, Dennis.
Dennis, I'm like, what, Vincent was last name.
Fazio.
Fazio, wow.
She's been on vacation.
I'm on, yeah, I was on a plane.
All right, so this one, so I have sort of the development of what I'm gonna call a tree and vegetation policy, including a plan for greater investment in trees and vegetation. Opportunity for public comment before trees are taken down, replacement plan for trees taken down, and a pollinator strategy plan.
And who writes the policy?
I mean, I think that's us.
No, I think we'll have DPW.
With some input from DPW, but I think it comes to us for approval.
Like, what challenges, I talked with Dennis, so I spent like a number of years talking to him about trees, most of the trees that do come down, it's for safety reasons, so there's not, there's the occasional tree that comes down because someone wants to like change something at their house, that does happen, but a lot of times, if they spot something, they proactively take it.
And there are, and there are trees coming down now, when sidewalks are being put in as part of the roads program, and they're being, there are trees being replanted, but that big tree that was digging up the road may not be there anymore.
And their unspoken policy, I know, is to replace twice as many as they're, as they, as they take down, but I agree, I mean.
Yeah, I just think people like to know, I mean, people get attached to something that's been shading their office for the fifteen years they've lived in.
I mean, I'll tell you, I got a, I got a question from my neighbor the other day, who, years ago, I think this was before we moved in, there were several trees taken down on our street, and she said they were supposed to replace them, they never replaced them, what's the status of that? And again, this is now going back a decade plus, but you know, but I think having a policy and having clarity on what to expect is, makes sense.
And if, you know, if trees are rotting or something, like, maybe there's ways, community can help start taking care of them, like, I just feel like knowledge is important, it's just transparent, see.
I'd also think, though, too, like, we could, we harness technology with that to kind of understand, so to your point, if there were trees that were taken down, like, why are they not there, kind of, you know, and so can we have an interactive, so like online, you can kind of like drop, drop pins to like places where like there's an issue, kind of like a, you know, a three-one-one or, you know.
A three-one-one for trees.
Yeah, kind of, right, but I mean, like, being, why not use like our, like, our technology for that purpose?
I mean, once you start mapping things like that out, you know, natural gas leaks kill trees, so like, maybe you can start seeing patterns and things like that.
The only reason I asked about who writes the process is because one of the options we have as a town council is to set up a subcommittee of town council members that can be involved in the process of writing that, you can delegate it to the town administrator and the staff that come up with it, we approve it. I'm just saying another option is to have a subcommittee of town council members on any issue if they want to be more involved in running up a process, running up a process.
Do we report our tree progress somewhere on the websites, you know?
I don't, I don't look at it, but I think we ask it for.
Everything, like, so Dennis has, I don't know that we have it all.
It used to be in a monthly DPW report when I ran in twenty eighteen, but it kind of disappeared, I think, with some of the staff changes.
Yeah, I mean, for Tree City, we have to, there, we have the numbers, but you're right, Mike, they're not as accessible as they could be.
It would just be good public relations.
Yeah, we planted two hundred trees.
Yeah, I think we've got really good things to say, we're just not.
Even names of the streets, you know, we planted, you know, every time I see Dennis, I say, what about North Emerson? Because they took the trees down, but now I walk there, and I'm wondering when we're putting them back, you know.
And Bob, to your point, I mean, the ESC has subcommittees that could take something like this on, too, as well.
All right. Did we capture yours, Ed?
I've got so many more, but yeah, we're good. Oh, actually, just one more thing, actually, and this is just, just kind of a broader concept, but I really want us to be able to look at the idea of having an improved process for sustainable budgeting within departments, and there are different ways of doing that, like, there are, like, New York City is doing, at least, the one percent, it's like a different kind of program in terms of how budgets are, how departments are looking at their budgeting. And I'd like to be able to see, I want to first gather more information, and obviously Steve can talk with you further about it, but I'd like to be able to see kind of some of the best practices employed elsewhere. So we can be sure that we're, when the departments are looking, thinking about budgeting, they're perhaps looking at it, you know, from a somewhat different perspective. And I think it's early enough now that next budget cycle, they could at least apply some of those principles to how they're looking at how they budget. To make sure that we're deploying every dollar to its best possible use.
Okay. So I'm gonna suggest maybe as a goal for this one, kind of an evaluation of best practices and other communities, maybe with, you know, some presentation at the tri board meeting in the fall, if that makes sense.
I'm happy to do legwork on that, but I do, I do want to look at not just even Massachusetts, but outside, to see what, where the success stories are.
Great. All right, who's next?
Does Anne want to go, since it's getting late there?
I was gonna say, Anne, what's your timeframe, you're muted, by the way, if you're.
Yes, thank you, thank you, I'll go, thank you.
You're like, please, don't make me belong.
Did you see my, did you see my eyes closing down? Yeah, so I had, I had three, but I guess that one of the things, this is around the master plan, because we are gonna be getting the results, and we're gonna be able to have input. We're gonna be able to have input, there's gonna be community input, but I'd like to make sure that we, from that, kind of develop our action item list with a timeline of when we can implement, and I guess it kind of like maybe from a strategic planning standpoint, we could look at the, kind of the findings of what they're recommending for implementation, and then we could look at, do like a strategic planning where you do, you know, this is a high effort, high impact, low effort, high impact, and maybe we focus on, you know, the first focus on the high-impact, low-effort ones, and then look at what's low effort, low impact, we can ignore that, and, or we can work on those, can be easy wins, and then the, what is it, the low impact? The low, the high, low impact but high effort, we take those off the boards, not being, not being feasible, so I'd like us to just kind of look at kind of what are the findings, and then rather than, and having a timeline of what is possible and when is it possible. So that is kind of a grouped all together.
Can I add to that from a goal standpoint, also, an accountability matrix, so not only what is possible and when, but, you know, how, like, how are we moving it forward, like, who are we tasking?
Yes, yes, I think that's great, yeah, so this is like, you know, here's our things, it's gonna be high-impact, low effort, how are we gonna get there? This is something we can implement quickly, and how, but how are we gonna do it? So I think that that would be fantastic, so, and I think that'll drive a lot of it. My other, my more tangible ones were around economic development, and I'm glad to hear Ed say about Albion Street, because I think that's the perfect place for economic development, because it'll kind of tie Foundry Street and all the housing that we've created there, and then if we can continue down Albion Street, I think it'll drive business into our downtown, but I do think that in terms of, I think it needs to be more than just one coffee shop, because my fear is that if we just do, we need to do something that's gonna get people, it's gonna drive business, and I think it's multiple businesses, and that might be, that might be too much, but I think that it really, we really should try to look at this as, as it's more than just one, it's kind of like a strategy of what do we want, where do we want it, and maybe we can work with Aaron in terms of what are some possible businesses and a vision of pursuing that, because I'd like us to pursue, I would like, in terms of economic development, I think that is expanding our commercial base is good, number one, is that expanding the commercial base. So I'd like to find other ways, too, that we can expand our commercial base. So in terms of goals, I am not, I guess that I'm not sure about the goal in terms of what's feasible, Steve, Aaron probably knows more about this, but maybe, again, it works around kind of a plan of what is it that, you know, what do we think is feasible, and then how do we, what is the action plan to move us towards that?
So I'm wondering here if the goal, and you talk about a plan, is, is it to kind of come up with, and I don't know, maybe Aaron has this already, but is it almost to say, you know, to kind of revitalize Albion Street, for example, from a business development perspective? You know, we need kind of, you know, ideally, we would have businesses in these types of categories, like, we keep talking about coffee shops, but obviously build a downtown on a coffee shop alone, but, you know, we need, you know, some greater sort of, you know, a retail establishment, a restaurant, you know, or almost kind of identifying, like, what do you target in terms of business recruitment for that area?
Yes.
Okay.
And Aaron might already have that, so.
Yep.
The other piece around economic development is, I'm just gonna kind of piggyback on what Ed said, is around, I was thinking more like, you know, beautification efforts that we can do to, because I think that those efforts will help attract more businesses to want to come to Wakefield when they see what our downtown looks like. So I don't know, in terms of the signage, this is gonna be, I was wondering if there's some way that we can help businesses, I know that when businesses come to Wakefield, that they have to adhere to our sign bylaw. And they have to pay for their signage, but is there some hot way that we can either through grants or something else, help existing businesses that might to, to get more signs that are consistent with kind of the aesthetics that we're trying to get to? As well as the new businesses? As well as the, the new businesses in town, because it seems like, and I'd like to see that sign bylaw be extended not just in our downtown, but in all of our business districts. Where we have, you know, retail businesses. Because I don't think that it extends down to Greenwood.
It's, it's townwide.
It is townwide. Oh, I thought it was just, I thought it was just down to, okay. All right, well, I guess that I really would like to see kind of the existing businesses be, not, not be forced to change their signage, but maybe being assisted to change, if we, if we want them to change their signage, that we can try to find them financial support to do so.
Steve, we had a grant program in the past, but maybe with one of the early iterations of COVID funds, but I, so I think we've done something before, but it's, it's something we can, you know, kind of add to our list for, for this year.
I think it's like, if we could, if we could promote it, if there's grant opportunities for, for local businesses to improve their signage, that, that we can, this could be an opportunity for them to do it in a very low-cost or no-cost way.
Okay.
And then that'll help us, I think, I think achieve what we're trying to achieve in terms of the aesthetics, which I think will ultimately help downtown development. I also love the idea in terms of the pollinator project, not only for, you know, I think it, it strikes two birds with one stone, is we have the sustainability piece of it, which is really important, and it also improves the aesthetics of the town. So I think that's a win-win, I think that's something that's not that hard to do, but it has high impact, so I would like that. Also, I would really like to, by the first quarter, hire our director of strategic growth and development. And I'd like to see that being done in the first quarter, in the fiscal year. And then I have some other, I have some other ideas, but I actually think it's best if we, if we wait for that master plan, and what are those recommendations that come from it, but I did want to tell you about my experience with the community van in Rye, down in the south coast of the UK. In this town, it's a population of five thousand people, but they have a community van, and it helps, and it's, it's used. It helps school, it helps with the schoolchildren, bringing them to places, sometimes it can bring people places, it can bring, you know, elderly people places all within town, kind of what we've been talking about. And I was asking my friend, I said, does that, how does it work with older people, though, if it's an app? I think it costs, I think it costs five pounds is what it costs, but they have volunteers who drive, I don't know how that would work here. But they have volunteers, it's mostly grant-funded and self-sustaining from the fees. And she said she thinks that there's a phone number that people could call, phone number to book it, and pay, and pay that way, or there's also the app, so if we want more information on that, we can get that, but I think that's, I think that's a fantastic idea. And then, so again, I, I think that all comes from the master plan, that that's just something that I wanted to think about. And then housing, I'd like to see, I'd like to see us kind of develop a plan in terms of how does economic, economic development and housing intersect. So what is our planned strategy around that? And again, I think that's probably something that is a longer term, a longer term goal, and something that the director of strategic development and Aaron would be working on collaboratively as part of the master plan as well.
So I guess that's my question, Anne, is that, is that one of the, I mean, likely things that comes out of the master plan, or is that sort of a standalone?
I think it's something that does come out of the master plan, I think it does, I think it does come out of the master plan, and it might be kind of like, it might be, I don't know if we have to join the two, or if that's gonna be something that comes out, I mean, people might say that they want to have more, you know, more places that they can walk to, to, you know, they want to have coffee shops and gathering spaces, and maybe that ties into our housing plan of how do we do that mixed use.
Can I just add something, Anne, same, because it is an important point, and I, I continue to like hit my head against the wall, because I totally agree, the intersection of economic development and housing is super important, and for the life of me, I cannot understand why on Main Street we have like so many like one-story businesses, and, or like maybe it's two-story, or like, it's like a boarding house or something, and I'm like, why? And I don't know how we best achieve this, but why are we not getting developers who are taking half a block, a block, and building anew, building retail on the first floor and two or three stories up, and they probably get, you know, at least three stories up, I would guess.
Kind of like the Haven Road model in Reading where they had.
Exactly, yeah, but for the life of me, I cannot understand, you think about, like, I know, and I know we have some challenging owners of Skeen and Sport Shack, places like that, but I'm like, even charm, I love charm, but like the fact that there's nothing above charm, or like nothing above brothers, like, why, why don't we have that? Because it takes, the. Cause it takes, you've got to develop your economic, you know, your 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 business base there. People are not gonna need the dependence on vehicles, which I know is a big thing for folks, and you're gonna have it just downstairs from you. And I don't know, we have all these big buildings going up off Main Street, but why is one focusing more? And I know we can't socially engineer that, but what can we do so that we don't have one-story businesses that are taking up prime retails? Prime prime real estate when we can go up and that that's that's exactly the area we should be going up.
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
So I I don't know how to encapsulate that.
You did have a new uh transfer of ownership of um the building where the bread shop is. So I think that you're gonna see that, you know, kind of a new.
Although ironically, that is one of the taller buildings.
Yeah, but it's not used, but it's not used.
No, it's true.
So you're gonna see that. I think that um I would hope that that happens at six. I'm trying not to say the old restaurant name, but you know what I'm talking about? The White Building, the White Building.
Like Sabatino, they got the whole store for Sabatino's, one story.
Right.
Like that's exactly where we should be building up.
Right.
Nearby the lake, it's it's. You have a lot.
And it's always been one story.
I know.
And and then and we know the owner, that's someone worth talking to.
Yeah.
For that building, right around by you, yeah.
So that to me is like.
But you're right.
I think the biggest challenge is, it feels like a blind.
Actually, that that whole side of Main Street.
Yes, like the entire side, all of that.
Both sides, really.
Right, but it's just like such a blind spot, so it's interrupting.
And what about Albion Street? Is the, or is there, I I can't visualize it right now, same thing, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, like.
Yeah, although you have many different owners on Albion, you have smaller. You know, so it's a little bit different.
Does he, I didn't really need that hoop.
Yeah, I know, I guess. Well, remember who said that?
Well, look what's happening in Melrose, or I think they're looking at the VFW, they're gonna keep the VFW and build up over it.
So I I'm gonna add maybe. Potential, that's where our capacity is, it's going up and not out.
Yes.
We're not utilizing that at all, and and maybe that'll be one of the the first tasks of your new position.
Yes.
And strategy.
And you bring in another forty, fifty, sixty unit, family units. That are gonna buy coffee in that coffee shop.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I'm I'm gonna add as a goal under what's now become a really big economic development priority. But I I think almost like an engagement strategy with property owners on Main Street related to, you know, sort of upward development, if if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And I wonder even too, is in terms of like what kind of grant opportunities there are for that? Or or tax incentives or something that the state might be, I don't know, if there's anything that would motivate. That to happen.
Well, there is the underutilized property program that we are putting in grants for, so yes, there is.
And our new designation.
And our new designation, yeah.
As a housing choice.
Opens up a lot of land opportunities for us.
I said that the other day and nothing happened.
I think on this one too, the other thing I think about is, you know, I mean, we experimented with, you know, some different tax strategies. When Anarama came into town, which, you know, I think, you know, we agree made sense. But are there different things that we could do like that that target some of that sort of infill development downtown specifically as we think about vibrancy? So that would be kind of a question that I'd wanna ask as part of that evaluation process and that planning process.
I mean, that whole Alano Bach, you know, we think about it, it's just like, that's not, that's not twenty-first century vibrancy, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Not trying to target a business in particular, but I think with that whole stretch, there is so much potential there. And and it's just not being realized and I don't, I don't know what what where the issue is with the developers in that. Maybe it is just owners not wanting to sell. I I know certain of them, it could be that. But there's, it that's, you know, we can do all the beautification and I think it's important to do that, but unless and until we have that. It's, that's really, that's, that's what we need. That's the heart of this.
I I don't wanna get into debates either about parking garages, but last night we went to Chiomici. And they've got that little tiny area that you can park in. And when I go down to Melrose, there's parking for people in general. Rows and rows of it behind.
Behind the.
Main Street. We have nothing here. Everything is spoken for, everything reserved. And and that bothers me. If you just wanna go downtown and you wanna park somewhere, everything's reserved. I don't know what we can do about that. I mean, I've heard people say, well, why don't we buy a building, tear it down and make a parking lot? You know, maybe, maybe a small garage at some point makes some sense if it's for the public, not spoken for. I'm just throwing it out there. I don't think our planning down here for parking with everything being reserved is anything like what I see in Melrose.
Oh, and I think the community van is a really good idea, but we'll see what comes out too with in terms of from the master plan.
You've got a van in Salem.
They do. So I've actually, Anne, I've put in master plan implementation, develop an implementation timeline and prioritization matrix. Coming out of the completion of the master plan, including accountabilities. Added some stuff to our downtown revitalization and economic development bucket. Uh including a plan for targeted business recruitment for the Albion Street corridor. And an engagement and incentive strategy with property owners on Main Street regarding upward development. Um there's probably a better word than upward infill.
Infill.
Uh and I actually did add in as well, uh evaluation of a community van transportation program similar to the Rye model. Um, you know, maybe with a goal of having some discussion on that within Town Council, you know, before the end of the year.
I mean, because I do think, I mean, from sitting in 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 hearing what I've been hearing is. I would not be surprised if traffic becomes an issue, if traffic is gonna become something that's gonna come out of the the master plan. So.
Okay.
And um my other piece was sustainability and that was on any new housing that's created in terms of multi-units. Um that there be some kind of, that we work on some kind of sustainability requirements that have to be met. Like the use of heat heat pumps, you know, whatever we work with. The Environmental Sustainability Committee on what those should be, and Julie, you can speak more to that.
Yep.
And that would be beyond the current stretch code is is the vision there.
Yeah, the opt-in stretch code essentially.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
All right.
In terms of a time, in terms of a timeline for that.
Yeah, the ESC is already working on that.
Okay.
We would probably, we would like to bring it to town meeting this fall.
Oh, great.
Um, we had an initial presentation from the state, we need to get Ben a little bit more involved. Um but, you know, fall, spring timeframe.
Good.
With with a with a horizon to be implemented.
Wow, that's great.
And it's just so you know, that opt-in is where housing would be all electric. And if it's not all electric, then you'd have to do some additional work.
Quick.
And big proponent of trees, so I I second, I second.
Tree and vegetation policy. Awesome. All right, thanks, Anne.
Yeah.
Julia or Maureen, would one of you like to go next, or since we talked about sustainability?
Yeah, I have a couple of those things. So I will say that my number one priority is around transit. So that absolutely includes the, I'm calling micro-transit. And I've already started talking with Aaron about that, there's some community people talking about it. But I think it's, and this may be on Maureen's list as well, I think it's a transit committee.
You stole it.
So but but I do, because I think, I don't think it's just the micro-transit though, I think that's really important. But I think it's advocating our, as a regular bus rider going north now. It's advocating to keep, at least keep our MBTA services in bus. It's the biped plan being implemented, trafficking advisory, it's sidewalks. It's the potential bus that Anne mentioned in Rye, but the high school, what Steve had when.
Which might be one of the same.
After-school bus, but um.
It's wayfinding for parking.
Yeah.
It's so many things, it's crosswalks, it's consistency of crosswalks.
But I think it's one committee.
Park right up to, but I agree, it's one committee, it's traffic calming, right? I think it's all these things.
It's it's the talking with the MBTA about their bus schedules, about the commuter rail schedule, about the fence in Greenwood that I want.
It's promoting the MBTA youth pass that we passed, you know, I think there's a lot of things out there that could fall under transit.
Yeah.
It's carpooling, it's so many things.
Making sure the gates work.
It's putting.
Prove, like all of that, right? Like all of that, making sure and like, um, yeah, where we have crosswalks and like all of that, just being.
To me, it's like when you have a meeting in town, you tell somebody how to get there on bus as well as, we know, we always assume people are gonna drive to places. So. Anyway, so that's my number one. Um and then, you know, I mean, pretty much everything else. Um I'm working on the MBTA communities, obviously that's going to be a, it's gonna be a big priority. We're doing some really great work on it, um but I'm really hopeful that we can get that through. And, you know, it may or may not be beyond just what's statutory. It may be that we can meet the rule, you know, re- meet the requirements within a fairly small area. And we said, we think we can probably around Wakefield, but it may be also looking down in Greenwood and looking over on Salem Street. And kind of spreading around that that type of zoning. And there's a lot of kind of things to be worked out with that, but I think that that goes to all the housing discussion that we've been having. Um, I, probably my third one, and this is a lot to the pop-ups and whatnot. But I mean, I have to say, the the fact that we had signs stolen this weekend in town, Black Lives Matter signs stolen, pride signs. Shows me that we still have a lot to do to build community in this town. Um, and I love the economic side of it, but I really think it's porch fests. And I think it's like Cambridge, yeah, I think it's what Cambridge just did with actually giving money to neighborhoods to hold rally. So you know who your neighbors are. Um, so it's, there's still a lot to do around building community and we're coming out of COVID. And I think it's not just big central parties, I think it's very neighborhood based. I think we have to build kind of our neighbors to be watching out for each other. Um, and then finally, it's just more of a comment on the volunteerism. Um but I, what I'm hearing from people who have stepped up and volunteered, um particularly during COVID. Is they have not had good experiences with the all online. And I know people who have dropped out of serving in town because of that. And so hybrid is not great. I mean, I've watched the Conservation Committee meetings that are here, it's very hard to hear, I don't know how today is going. But somehow we've, we have to figure out how to let people see each other, but also maintain that. Um, you know, the accessibility. So I I don't know what the solutions are, I know we're working towards more.
I can't think of.
I think it's gonna be hybrid, but I think it's more places so that more people can do it and make make the choice that's right for them. Whether that's being on, you know, and for me, sometimes it's being on Zoom and sometimes it's being with people. But I think we need viable places to hold hybrid meetings.
On that, like, I'm looking at the screen now and if you're watching this and seeing like, I feel like we need to do something different. With the way that we're like recording, like this, because you look at that that setting, right? Like right there, you see Jonathan and and Steve, but you don't see kind of everyone. So if if someone was speaking, you know, Bob was speaking, for instance, you may not even know it was Bob, you know, like Mike, yeah, you can barely see Mike. So I don't know if it's like we have to do a better job of like putting cameras higher and having more, I don't know if somehow more of them.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? It doesn't, that that's a very, that it's a, that's a difficult image, I think, for the public to watch and get much insight. I don't even know that people that aren't here at this meeting have you.
Some some of, some of the law offices I've been in, I mean, they've got the the cameras that follow you.
The owl.
The room.
Yeah.
And they've got multiple screens, so you're really getting more of a panorama.
Yeah.
We don't have that where I work, cause it's federal building, but.
I think we need something like that, and then maybe it's talking with Todd more though, but I feel like anyone watching this, it's not very dynamic, if you're.
It was very hard watching the Conservation Committee meetings that were in here, cause they were looking at big maps and they were moving around. And you couldn't hear what they were saying while the maps were moving around or the papers. So anyway, I don't think it's an easy solution, I'm not sure it's a big time goal, but I do think that we have to figure it out.
Well, we did, we did put some ARPA money towards it. We do have a plan and we'll be presenting that at the next meeting.
Cause I think we're kind of saying it now.
Yeah.
Like just.
Well, this is a little bit of a different.
And your point's really well taken, because I can tell you from experience, the Bylaws Review Committee, when you're dealing with minutia. When we all sat at a table like this, twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, it worked so much better.
Yeah.
Than trying to do the zoning bylaws on Zoom.
Yeah.
It's it's really cumbersome.
The MBTA community's been similar. When we were together, we were really, really productive. Now we've kind of been pushed to Zoom because the audio wasn't great, we were doing it in the library and it's just not the same.
Yeah.
It's not the same experience for somebody who doesn't have a lot of time but wants to get back to their community.
So I'm actually gonna add that as a goal related to the kind of getting more people engaged.
I think it's related to that.
Cause I think it's it's part and parcel of that same question, how do you bring people in? So if I'm gonna, again, just kind of speak back to this, um, we talked about the sustainable housing policy that I think, you know, both of you are. Are advocating for. We just talked about the um engagement uh in boards and public meetings. Investment strategy for building community, a goal being promotion and funding plan for neighborhood focused events such as a porch fest, which I love that idea. I feel like if Reading could do a porch fest, we could do a porch fest.
I agree, I agree.
Melrose did a porch fest.
I know, but they're like a little bit more urban. I feel like if Reading is more suburban than us, I think if like, we have more porches than they do.
Yeah.
Something we had talked about too in that, um was a townwide, um like garage sale, yard sale day. Which, I don't know if Melrose did, somebody did, which I also thought, especially with all these like buy nothing, recycle groups. I think one day where it's like.
Yeah.
Drive around and pick up people's stuff that might go well.
And we could tie it in with like the Chamber, like it was economic development and have like promotions at restaurants and things downtown. So we bring a lot of people from other communities here.
Yeah.
We did the Reading DPW the other day, I didn't know, I had no idea how much they took there. I didn't know, they they recycle styrofoam, I mean, they recycle, I don't know, hope they recycle it, that's what they said.
Oh, I'm sure they do, they probably save our stuff.
That was, that was a combined Wakefield.
Oh, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, it has ways.
Although they don't take all of that stuff every day, that was.
Oh, that's, that was just a day. That was a big line that you posted.
Yeah, it was Clean Harbors, huge line, it was Clean Harbors, but then you also, if you have motor oil, you go to their.
Right.
I think they do take that stuff all the time, because it was not part of like the Clean Harbors.
It was not part of the Clean Harbors, you're correct.
They had different.
So their their pit is basically set up for, which we've talked a lot about.
All the time?
It, yeah, it weren't, they weren't just taking, Clean Harbors was taking styrofoam, I don't.
No, no.
That was often.
That was, that was ready.
Anne, Anne is working on it.
I'm sensing another goal here of uh expanding services at the pit to include.
I can't believe it didn't come up already.
Well, I I didn't wanna like hijack the whole like.
He was using his, his coins, you know, carefully.
But no, I mean, I I got the sense that it was always that way.
That's what I'm gonna break it up in sustainability, so we could slide it.
I was impressed.
I mean, I would love a climate plan, there's a lot I would like in sustainability, but there's also committees that are doing really good work and they eventually come to us.
All right, so I'm adding something about expanded services for the pit focused on styrofoam. What else does Reading do that we don't do?
Well, they have motor oil over there too, that they're, that they're recycling.
Paint.
Yeah.
But those are those joint days though.
They don't do that all the time, motor oil.
Probably not.
No, I I'll check, but there's no way.
There's some really um, some some legislation that might really shake this whole world up on.
Yeah.
On kind of reusing things and.
Well, the styrofoam was impressive to me, because we throw it away here.
That was a definite, like that was a permanent thing, that wasn't a one day.
Well, and that's something where for it to be effective, it has to be.
I know what they do in a regular.
It has to be regular, it's gonna be effective, because otherwise you're not going, like it's something to save your motor oil for six months. It's another thing to stave every piece of styrofoam that you accumulate.
But it costs money to have a truck there.
Right.
I mean, not for nothing, but also the kind of community response we had, again, we shared with you communities, the idea of increasing the frequency of doing that. I think would, you know, I don't know if there's grant opportunities there, something, but there was clearly demand.
Yeah, there's a long line, I waited in it too.
Another thing we could consider with the van is, and I know we don't wanna fund things out of ARPA, that ARPA is then gonna go away. But we could could consider kicking it off with that and see how the fees do, right?
We could, we could consider it as a pilot, right?
Pilot, and then hopefully the fees, which I think does work in Salem from what I've heard, you know, that the fees ultimately might pay for it.
Plus, we've got it written into the Top of the Lake contract that they're.
Right.
I mean, I I think business, if we could also get businesses to contribute to it, it'd be good.
Great. So just the other things, Julie, that I wrote down that you mentioned, uh creating infrastructure for public engagement and advocacy around transit. So a committee established to focus on MBTA advocacy, traffic planning and calming, promoting walkability, carpooling, et cetera.
Yep.
I'm gonna say by year end. Um, and then the MBTA community zoning changes, the proposed zoning changes presented to town meeting, probably by the fall, I would.
I think we're gonna have to do it by the fall, cause I think we're gonna need some time in there.
Yeah, okay.
So I think our goal is to.
All right, awesome. Maureen? All right. Awesome. Maryne.
Um, so people use some of mine. So the transit walkability, everything you just said, also included in that would be like, the new development coming at the head of the lake, like talking to them about their shuttle to the MBTA, right, less cars. So all of that would like go through this committee, which I think would be really broad, but anything doing with shared vans, shared bike paths, like all of that would go under transit. Like, anything about personal cars, everything excluding personal cars would go into this. Yeah, rail trail. Cause we, the rail trail committee's kind of been quiet, so all of that would go under that. Um, uh, so it's just some things we hadn't talked about that's kind of still on my mind. So we have brought back performance review, uh, just for Steve, but I'd love this year to work on all of Steve's direct reports doing it. And I think this will help with the economic development.
They'll be reviewed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think the goal setting, so.
One of your goals.
Yeah.
So I think that, like, I think what's hard with economic development and with this new position and kind of DPW and sidewalks, as we were talking about, is that like, you know, a lot of it is reactionary. And so to kind of a year out of like, well, this is what economic development is gonna be focusing on, right? And like, we had all these, like, the pop-ups and supportive businesses, not in the chamber. Um, I've, I've talked about, you know, how do we promote employment opportunities for businesses in town? And then obviously working with nonprofits, including WCAT. Like, I think we still have to figure out WCAT funding. And so I think, I think as we do performance reviews for each of the department kind of heads and kind of, they kind of do goal settings based on what we talk about here, but it'll be less ad hoc and more like forward visioning and tying in the master plan and, and, um, as Ann talked about. So I'd love to kind of, you know, with, with Health and Human Services and Economic Development and DPW, and engineering, like kind of think about, you know, engineering doing, um, envision kind of that sort of stuff. I'd love to see that. Something that falls under that, which is like a minor sub, but I'll do it as a separate category, is I realized as I was at my community garden last week and I was giving, uh, Dan feedback, like telling him how it went. There's great people, great conversations. And so it was like, I think we need more at the, at the, at the community center. But what I realized is, I don't know if our programming, Steve, we really do surveys after our programming. And I'd love, I think it goes to the welcoming inclusivity, like people sign up for pickleball or people, like, do we, does, Dan gets all that feedback. I know Karen gets the feedback. But I'd love to do it more formalized, so then we can kind of say like, we had a hundred people, you know, a hundred and forty people apply for Community Garden for forty-nine spots. And like, that, that's showing us people are interested. People are interested in pickleball. Oh, we tried goat yoga and like the surveys weren't so great. So I'd love, I'd love some of our.
They poop a lot.
I'd love some of our, like, our outward, our outward facing, like, things that we do for community, kind of doing surveys, so we have formalized. I know they all get it internal, like if you ask Dan, if you ask Karen. But, but I'd love to kind of do, get some of that documented, so then we can kind of think about programming and like, what's working and what's not. And that just ties into my, like, I, I'm very worried post-pandemic about loneliness of seniors in town. And what, you know, the walkability will help with that, transit will help with that. But really, how can we do better coordination between the REC and the Council of Aging and the library to really do targeting? And the numbers of the senior center for having the staff that we do there, like, it's a lot of people in town, seniors don't use it. And we have a whole second floor that isn't being utilized. And so how do we, you know, they, they get kind of the same people, but how do we get more reach out? Is it more programs down here? Is it more programs with rec, rec, you know, pickleballs for seniors or? I don't know. Um, I don't know what the solution is, but I'd love to think about that. And I think part of, as we talked about the Albion Culture Exchange, is I don't think we have a liaison to the REC committee. And so I think that's something to think about too, because now that that falls under it, but I'd love, I, I think we need to think about kind of loneliness and depression kind of in that group. May, maybe it's, you know, I don't think it's a separate committee, but I think it's the coordination between health and human services and Council on Aging and the Library Recreation, kind of all those social services. Um, we mentioned trees, we mentioned economic development. I think we just need to be um, more targeted. And I think there's such potential there to make it all happen. And then this is in its own category, but I'm gonna make it. I don't know where it falls under.
I can figure it out.
Um, I think we have to take a vote at town meeting to make the Board of Health appointed and not elected. So, um, over pandemic, our Board of Health Committee members got harassed. People showed up at their houses, people called them, people emailed them, um, not from town. And for what they do, I would love, other towns around us, I know we looked at this a couple of years ago, are not elected, they're appointed. We'd also talked about when, um, Anne Santos was a, was on the council about making it five members, not three.
Right, I was gonna say the second.
So, so I'd love, I'd love to make it five members and talk about making it, um, appointed and not elected.
Right, so that's a charter change, so we have to make sure we follow the process.
Right.
Would, would the appointed, in your opinion, would the appointed help with that kind of, what they went through?
Yeah.
And why, why is that?
I, I, you know, that if.
Different when your name's on a ballot. It really is.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
They just, the vis, I don't think people find you so easily. And they just, they, I don't, it hasn't continued from what I hear, but I, I was, I was really upset that we had town volunteers elected who, you know, did not want to run again because they have young kids in the school system. And they found, you know, her private Facebook group and, and, um, fr- fr- private and she had, you know, yeah, I don't know. I, I don't know if it would necess, I don't think they would get it as bad if they were. I don't hear about our appointed getting as bad.
Well, I think it makes it worse, because there were only three, so they couldn't even go to each other to, for support.
Right.
Right. So I think it's a little bit of both.
It's a hard.
Free is a terrible.
Bad number in a committee.
And the growing trend is that they're, you are right, they're appointed in another municipality, not elected.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good point.
I think also with the Board of Health, there's a certain like level of expertise, expertise and competency you're expecting. And there's something about it just being an elected position where you may not have someone that has any background necessarily, that could run and be elected. So even if we don't, if, I, I think expanding to five makes sense, but even if we don't have all five appointed, having some kind of mix here, so we can be sure that as a town, we have at least a few steady hands there who actually have the subject matter expertise that is needed for that, because as we saw during COVID, it was a very important role to be playing. And I'm, it's no knock on anyone there now, but I'm just thinking, anybody theoretically could run for it. And I don't know that that's, it's, it's so specific in, in what they have to focus on. You need to have that background to do a good job.
We've lucked out that we have three people who are actually incredibly well qualified to be on Board of Health, but.
But that's not a given.
To your point, that's not a given.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, any, anyone could run.
And it wasn't always the case.
Yeah.
And, and when you have it appointed, like with a permanent building committee, in the bylaw, it says that two-thirds of the members of the permanent building committee should cut, have these, this type of background.
Right.
Yeah.
And you can put that if they're appointed, but if you don't have that, then they're not.
So Steve, from a process standpoint, if we're to propose a charter change, so obviously that would have to go to town meeting and then go to a vote.
Probably, I'll have to, I'll have to go with Melon, probably.
Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm putting this on as sort of a Board of Health structure goal. I, I think maybe with their priority, maybe with the objection of evaluating the feasibility of appointing Board of Health versus electing members, evaluating expansion to five members. Maybe with an idea that, you know, we have presentation and discussion to town council in advance of spring twenty twenty-four town meeting, so that if we do decide to put something forth, we would, we would kind of target that town meeting and then a subsequent vote. But we can figure out the timing and process of that.
Can, can I ask, Maryne, is there room, you, because you're up there a lot in the community gardens, would there be room for expansion? Cause a lot of people, every year we have more people.
Yeah.
Apply than.
Yeah, my recommendation would be to go for another site. I actually think, like, doing it at the senior center, I think it would like bring more people to other parts of the community. I think we could do it a little bit more there, but not a ton. Uh, people walk their dogs, they kind of.
I'm trying to envision where it would be at the senior center though, because it's all parking and building.
They, I thought they have a little land in the back, don't they?
I don't think so, not much, but, but you're.
So then maybe Maple Way. I mean, I, I, we had a whole list of places, not by the lake, but I think other places, you know, what's,
Right.
what's cool about it, right? And, and I'll go talk to Dan about it, but it's like, they're the boxes. So you actually could do them on pavement. Right? Like, we, we don't need grass to do them on. You could, I don't want to take a parking spot, parking spaces at the senior center, but because they're.
Trust me, there'd be a revolt.
Yeah, that's not where we want to do it, but I, I think a second location wouldn't be so bad somewhere, one of the other parks.
It's an idea.
Butler Ave, but we're talking so much about that too, would be something potentially.
Yeah, and so, uh, cause we don't want to use the ground there. Yeah, that's not a bad idea. I mean, I'd want somewhere where people can get to via public transportation. I mean, I got, I, I know you guys get sick of these stories, but I, you know, I went there on opening day. There was an older Asian couple. They were so excited. They're like, oh, we live with our son and he's the one who got this. And they were like growing stuff that I, like sesame. They were growing sesame. I've never seen sesame grow. And then this like, you know, young guy had his own plot, just came by, was like, yeah, I'm like really excited to see what I grow out of here. And I was like, every time you go there, you meet different people and it's different. It's just such a great, I, I, it's just so great that I think if we did it somewhere else, I don't know, maybe you know, I don't know if there's places, school butler makes sense. I just, it's not really public trans, you know, where.
Even like the, the piece of land over by you at Houghton.
Yeah, that, that triangle.
No, we're gonna be adding green space at the crazy five-way stop sign in Green.
Yeah.
Places to do it.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna add sort of community garden expansion, evaluation of alternative locations for community garden and identification of funding sources for second location in advance of summer twenty twenty-four. Obviously, this will come back for discussion to the group, but something to, something to look into.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of, you know, places we could think about. I think parking around his triangle is pretty bad, but.
Yeah, there's really no parking. There's also no water there, which is another thing.
Yeah, you need water too, that's true.
Um, but I mean, again.
Yeah.
But again, it doesn't have to be fifty in one place. It can be, you know, five or six in one place.
So a couple other things, Maryne, that I wrote down, development of a long-term funding strategy for WCAT. Um, is, is one of the things you mentioned. And so I know we've talked about a working group before, and so maybe identifying that working group um, and getting something kind of discussed and, and sort of agreed upon prior to the twenty twenty-five budget. A lot of what you mentioned, I put in a category of improved community engagement programs. So formalizing survey plans for programs run through REC, COA. You know, with plans to incorporate results into future programming, better coordination of programming between REC, COA and library around combating loneliness and depression among residents. Makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, and then I think was that it? And then the Board of Health structure. Oh, and performance reviews for all town administrator direct reports, I've got.
Yeah, and goals. It's, it's, for me, it's more the goal setting than the performance review, but they go hand in hand.
So I, I think our marching orders for Steve would be a performance review process for the year that just ended, fiscal twenty twenty-three, with kind of a goal-setting process for fiscal twenty twenty-four. The year ahead. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Yep, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Can I just, um, jump in on the, on the piece of around loneliness? And I think that that's absolutely a, a, a concern and something that we should do as a community. Have we thought about bringing adult ed back? Like adult ed courses that we could offer during the day as well as at night, and we could use the Albion Cultural Exchange for that. So we could help get that building more utilized and also just providing a real variety of different types of courses that people might be interested in. And it might be good too, is that I think that that's, I like to look at things as multi-generational as well. And, um, you know, so that, you know, community ed is a place where we could have people of all ages interacting together.
Did we used to do adult ed?
We used to do, so we used to do adult ed when I was first on the school committee. It was done through the school department. And then it was disbanded, because there were a lot of issues around the running of the community ed, uh, the way that it issues with that. And so, it never got brought up again, but it, you know, something that's through the REC department, I think would be great. We still have a lot of things on like, you know, they have sewing, photography, they did like computer classes, like how to use Word, how to use Excel. Painting. There was a, I think that there was a music group, a singing group.
I mean, the library does a lot, right? And the VOKE does a lot of what you mentioned, because I, and so maybe there's a way of like, you know, them collaborating with the REC and kind of doing some of that stuff.
I think it's the Albion culture, I think the branding of it too, the branding and promotion of it would be important. Like, we had Wakefield Adult Ed, and then it used to be that everybody got mailed a brochure of, you know, every session, here's what's gonna be offered, here's the days that it's offered and the cost. And that might be an idea. The other piece, uh, I was gonna save this, but I'm just gonna bring it up now, um, is it around the Housing Trust? Is I read an article about multi-generational housing. And I've heard that it's like housing that kind of creates a community where it works out really well, where you have people who don't drive, but the people who do drive can help the people, like the, the seniors who aren't driving. They can help the seniors take them to appointments or help them to, to get food. Help them to get food by the younger people who live in the community, in this community environment. And then the older people sometimes can help care for the children, you know, kids in the neighborhood that if the mom or dad needs to go out briefly, that that they can watch their kids. It's just, it's kind of like communal living and people helping. And it's a multi-generational approach. Which I think would help build community. I think it would help build community. I think it would be something that could help with our housing, with the housing needs. So, um, and it could be like we talk about, you know, we talk about the Housing Trust and different types of housing, but this could be a real intersection of different populations. And it would help combat loneliness.
Well, one of, one of the things that had been mentioned to me, Anne, was, you know, if we had a mixed use with different uses, like just some disabled housing, sometimes the payments that are made to take care of some of the, uh, disabled folks could actually be made to seniors, you know, to, to be involved in watching or, you know, sitting with somebody. So it works both, it could.
That's great.
Yeah.
It could work both ways.
Yeah. Yeah, I love that.
So I'll, I'll add that and suggest that maybe a couple of things to look at is, one, evaluating opportunities as we think about the master plan implementation. Are there specific strategies that come out of that in multi-generational housing? And maybe a second thing, as we talk about Butler Ave, is, is that a location? Right? Where, where something like this makes sense, especially if we're talking about a mix of, you know, moderate income, disabled, you know, elderly housing and other things.
I think just on Anne's point, um, because I, I worked on the same, same thing as enrichment programs. I used to, in my, like, growing up, we'd get like a, a catalog, like every quarter, maybe all these different programs you could take, like, hey, you learn how to do this or that. And to your point, Maryne, I think VOKE has some version of that.
Yeah.
I think one of the, um, one of the concerns that I have about Albion going forward is I like that Dan is kind of like the operations person for that, but I do think we need some sort of Albion kind of programmatic committee that focuses strictly on the program aspect of it. So they could perhaps bring together like, if Liz from Sweet Bay wants to do like a flower arranging thing, or if there are people at the VOKE who want to do something. So they kind of maybe are like more the point people, because right now we don't really have anyone that's in charge of, say, like exhibitions or like, you know, any sort of, like, it's, and I, I know we have the Arts, the Arts Council, but they're.
Collaborative.
But they don't, but they really, they really do grant, they do grants.
So I, I guess actually maybe two things, sorry not to interrupt, but what I, I, I'm thinking of the Arts Collaborative Wakefield, which actually has done most of the programming at, at Ace for the last several years in terms of running the exhibits. Like, they're the ones that have been bringing in the artists and setting up the displays and.
But that's, but that's, but that's also why it's, it's kind of have, has more of a reputation now of like an arts gallery, I would say. Whereas I think that we're trying to expand, like what that's being used for. And I don't want to, I, I don't want to take anything away from what Dan's doing, but I think that if we have. Whereas I think that we're trying to expand like what that's being used for, and I don't want to, I, I don't want to take anything away from what Dan's doing, but I think that if we have some kind of committee that is looking at holistically, how, what can we use this, be using, doing in this space? What are the things we can be doing? Like I know, um, what's her name? It's escaped me, the room for writers and.
Colleen.
Colleen. And, and if people like that, that want to do things like that, I think if we had, again, to be clear, you are not an operations committee. You are not determined what we do structurally with the building, but programmatically, I think if we had someone that, that you know, that Dan was a part of, that would be, uh, I think a good way of expanding the usage in.
Maybe it's a subset of the recreation committee even.
Could be. Could be, yeah.
All right.
Can I just add to building utilization that we look at the second floor of Marical as well? Right? That's, I mean, it's privately.
Oh, okay, right, right.
But I.
Oh, the first floor, wait.
No, the second floor.
Second floor.
I think that's true. I forget that there's a second floor.
Yeah, I mean, there's some good space there. That's town space eventually. Maybe if it turns over, we don't turn it over and we use it for something else. But it's right on the T line, you know, it's right on the bus line. It's walking. It's, it's just space I wanted to look at as well.
Is there any, are there thoughts or plans for the second floor of these building? I mean, it's a mess right now.
Well, we need to elevate them.
Wait a minute, you said the second floor of Marical, not here.
Right, I'm sorry. I, I, I shifted over.
Oh, yeah, no, there.
Yeah, there's.
Cause I, I think the second.
There's a lot of second floors.
The upper floors of ACE are kind of off limits until we get an elevator.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But so you're talking about second floor of Marical. We've talked about second and third floors of the seniors.
Even if it's like coworking space or something.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I think the elevator discussion also shouldn't just be kind of be put off as though like.
No.
Right, right.
I think that has to be in the mix, you know, like for, for ACEs.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I think that's still, I mean, I would put that as a priority, you know, just because, I mean, otherwise we have two floors of a building there that, you know, no one can use.
Right. Spiral staircase doesn't exactly cut it.
No.
No. No. That'll have to be gone.
All right. Any other thoughts from the councils? I have a couple of things to add, although we've covered most of my list, and then I want to Steve give you a chance to. Um, so on my list, a couple of things, uh, one is continue improvements to public accessibility and water quality at Lake Q. Uh, that includes for me, I think, as I look ahead for the year, a, a lake path at least completed along the public rights of ways uh, between Shore Road and Willard and a plan for, um, you know, kind of the rest of the west side of the lake. Uh, and also work started on the main street, uh, inflow projects. Um, we've talked a lot about economic development. We had actually created a charter for an economic development committee. I think that must have been during COVID. I, I remember Ed, Ju- Julie and I worked on that. We never actually recruited that committee again, partly because, you know, it was COVID and everyone was just kind of in survival mode, but I, I'd actually like to kind of bring that back. I think we have a, I think we created a good structure for it.
We do, and in fact, I, the advertisement Cherry has provided to me for, but he doesn't run yet.
Okay.
So I think that's something we should get going on. Um, so I have that on my list, so I'll add that.
Um, this probably goes without saying, but obviously making sure we're continuing to hit our, um, our key milestones on the, uh, high school building project. So, you know, to me, that means getting design development completed and groundbreaking um, underway by next June. Um, two other things, more around sort of government operations. Uh, one is continuing to move forward on succession planning for key administrative posts. And so I think taking that succession planning document, Steve, that you and I had worked on and kind of updating that and starting to blow that out and talking about how that gets built into
The budgets.
Business budgets, but also business goals for your direct reports. Um, uh, and then finally, uh, documenting policies and procedures for the town council. And, and this, I'm going to put a little bit of a pin in because I think when the inventory of what we have is in place, that may determine sort of what we need. Um, but I, I, I'd want us, you know, to have some discussion around, you know, once we get that inventory out and get everything on the website. Are there things that we are missing that would be helpful for, you know, less so us? So we, you know, we've all been working together now, you know, for at least a year, you know, we've kind of, you know, we've got a good sort of cadence of, of how we do things, but you know, thinking about sort of onboarding future members of the town council. Are there other things that we need to put on paper that don't exist today? So any thoughts, questions, reactions?
I'll say that I thought what Steve put together back in two thousand and nine has a lot of good stuff in it. And I did a cursory research of local municipalities and most of them do have something like this. This is that twenty-two section document I referred to earlier, where only the public participation policy was adopted. And obviously this would have to be updated because it's years old now, but there is precedent that a lot of other towns, Reading, Stonem, Lynnfield have, you know, policies and procedures for their town council board select and what have you.
We should remind them about the annual ethics requirement when they come in.
That I feel we actually now have, I feel like now that Cherry owns that, I think we're on top of that, um, which is great.
I think it's, um, it's a good reminder, Jonathan, of the high school milestones. I think that was, you know, that's going to be a big deal over the next couple of years. And I think it's something that the entire town can feel proud of and get behind. And so we've talked about you know, making sure we have a website that has the milestones that I think we, um, Steve, I think it only, it only took six years, but I, I feel like, um, with our triple A bond rating, we did a press release, which was, I've been asking Julie and I have been talking about that. And so I think when we hit those milestones and, you know, I, I, we need to celebrate that sort of stuff, but I also think, you know, maybe, um, you know, having the community feel like they're a part of it. I think that's really important. I think we haven't done it quite as much with the public safety building, but I think to really, you know, have a website that's says we're on, that we're meeting all our goals is going to be really important.
Yeah. I think you're right. And I think having some ceremonial thing, like when we do the groundbreaking, like that's a big deal. I mean, that's something that, you know, we should have an event for and you know, we should recognize the, the people that have helped kind of get us to this point.
We should probably wait till all the permits are in place first.
Oh, me, well, again, we can't break ground until we've got permits, so.
But when you have a groundbreaking, and I think that was a high school, the first year was a high school, it was nineteen seventy-two. You could think about inviting people from that class.
Yeah.
To come out to the groundbreaking ceremony. The first class of Lakefield is there when they're breaking ground for the new high school.
Every subsequent class might come with sledgehammers to take down the old building.
Yeah.
All right. Steve, do you have anything?
I, I just had a couple of things I think we should consider. We talked a lot about housing tonight. Uh, we should also look into make sure that are there any additional locations or a- areas at Harts Hill that we could develop? We kind of talked about that.
I wanted to ask you about that. I drove up there and I read in the report that we have land up there. I couldn't see where it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Yeah, but.
So that may be something that we wanna, we wanna look at.
Who, who would we, it's stupid.
I, I think we work with the housing authority.
Yeah, maybe Hickey thought there was land behind.
Yeah.
That where the current location is, but I, I can't get a feel for what property she's.
So maybe we should walk it and take a look at it and see.
How old are those buildings? I mean, they look pretty.
Well, there is the new war building.
Oh, no, of course.
The garden's always new. The old, they're, they're quite old. They do get like a refresh every time. Um, the antenna moves out.
I'm just wondering whether there's a way to kind of re- revitalize what's there, expand what's there.
How does that work from a capital standpoint? I mean, is that something that the housing authority has federal money for or?
Yeah, when they built the last building, they got a HUD loan on it. So that is how it works, yeah.
I think mass housing was involved too.
Probably both.
Yeah, I, I, I looked at the chain title at one point.
Yeah.
So then they finance it and hopefully they get enough rents to cover.
Right, which there seems to be not an issue with getting the rents.
Which is, which is great, because I can't imagine they're, they're rowing in the dough.
Yeah. Uh, we have to put on our radar screen at some point. This is a building that gets pushed down the line all the time is, you know, we've put a lot of Band-Aids on it, but the DPW garage, we should be thinking about that at some point. For, from a lot of standpoints, is that even where there should be a DPW garage? I think maybe we start there.
You're thinking of another tunnel development?
Yeah. Should it be on Audubon Road? I mean, should your DPW garage be in the middle of your town, downtown? Something to consider. I think there's a lot of things we need to consider.
Do we own any land on Audubon?
No. But we own that, because that.
And the Reading is a, done.
Reading, uh, all we could get from the, um, National Guard was horrible land that we would probably never be able to get to.
Okay.
Because of wetlands issues and things like that. Like there was a little bit of a blend in there. Most everything else was, uh, was, uh, was touched. One thing we, where we will be looking at here, um, is, I hate to get into very dry budgetary matters, but, um, we will be really looking at an enhanced chargeback model on everything for, um, for non-tax revolving accounts. We already do it with, um, uh, water and sewer. For instance, every water and sewer, um, salary uh, portion of, health insurance portion of, uh, 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 Medicaid cost portion of, of the crop is all charged back to the enterprise fund, as it should be, to give a true cost of that service. We haven't been too good. I've been, I've been, um, honing through some of the revolving accounts at the schools, and we're going to be doing that as well there, because for a couple of reasons. A, it's, it's true budgeting. What, what did you call it before, Mike?
Honest.
Honest budgeting, honest budgeting. Um, and if, you know, some of these programs that you can get state and or federal funding for, you should show the true cost of that. So we're really thinking of the school lunch program or the, that, that program. Probably about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year of taxpayer money is paid for health insurance and things like that. They're getting a bill this year to take out a revolving account that has a lot of money in it, and it should, it should be there. And that should be part of their base going forward to get more state and federal funds for that. Um, I think that's fair. We'll be looking at that all, all over the place. I think everything else that I was thinking of is pretty much covered. So, some good things.
All right. Well, thank you. This has been a couple of long hours of doing this piece of it, but I, I think this is really good. We've got, I, I think a really solid plan. So I will clean this up, um, in the next couple of days, Steve. I'll, I'll probably send it to you first and ask you to help me.
Absolutely.
Um, you know, revise it, make sure I got everything. I think Anne may have cast out.
Looks like we're a very cool, like, conference room that way.
So I, I know we have a, we have about fifteen minutes left scheduled. Um, I, I do want to go through liaison assignments and we'll try to do, oh, Anne's back. We'll try to do this as sort of a lightning round thing, you know, I don't want to spend a ton of time. Um, and again, I apologize, I was going to put this on screen so that we could all see it, but I don't have internet here. Uh, but what I did was I actually went through, so to your point earlier about the rec department, Mary Ann, I actually went through and kind of identified like every department and every board, even where we haven't had liaison assignments. And I actually want to go through all of them and figure out if we don't have a liaison assignment, doesn't make sense to have one. And then obviously, as we go through, you know, looking for, uh, for those that we decide makes sense to have a liaison, you know, looking for kind of volunteers or interest in each one. So I'm going to try to do this really quickly. I'm going to go through in alphabetical order. Um, so Arts Council, don't have one now. Do we feel we need one? And if so, is anyone interested?
I think we had an Arts, isn't that what we just dissolved?
No, that was the Albion Culture Exchange. This is the, this is the former cultural council that does.
Oh, the cultural council, right, 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 okay.
They don't really do anything other than the grants.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
They're pretty, I mean, that's a pretty standard thing for town to town, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
But I do, I do think this, like, I think we talk about liaisons, but I also think a lot of these should have a staff point. And I think that falls under economic development, right? They give out money. It's, it, that's like a, so I think it falls under the errand bucket. It doesn't mean she has to go to everything, but I think for a lot of these, it's good to have a staff and or lead, like, town council person.
Okay. Uh, BB Library, Mike is the current liaison. So do you want to keep that? Or does anyone want to fight that? Fight you, fight you for that one?
I, I had sent in a few items, you know, thinking of, that we would be switching things around, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not now, not locked in and I'm not locked in to any particular thing. If someone has an interest in something, you know, um, I can, I can stay in the library or if somebody else wants to pick it up, I can go somewhere else.
I mean, first of all, do we think it makes sense to have a, a library liaison?
I think it does. I think it does.
Not, not to lead the discussion, but I.
No, I, I, I mean, you know, I, I tuned in with them a couple, a few times this year. Haven't made every meeting, but, um, actually went there one time and they said, oh my gosh, this usually doesn't happen, you know, so.
All right. Well, hearing no one who's real, gonna fight you for it.
I, I, ju- just as a former liaison, I think they do a five-year strategic plan, and I think it's up this year. So they'll be starting the process for their next one, which is really important, because that, we get a lot of money from the state and have to like hit a lot of goals. So that's just something to be mindful of.
Yeah.
Because I was, I feel like it was seven, seventeen to twenty-three, eighteen to twenty-three? I don't know, Steve, like.
I remember going to.
Right, like, yeah, Catherine puts together a group.
It was pre-COVID, we know that.
It was pre-COVID, because it was in person.
Yeah.
And I feel like it was only five years.
Yeah.
I'd say eighteen.
So maybe eighteen to twenty-three, so it's coming up, just something to be mindful of. But that's the reason to keep a liaison there too.
All right. Um, Board of Assessors, we don't currently have a liaison. Does anyone feel we need one for that?
I don't think we need one for assessors per se. I mean, I, I used to be on the board. It's a, it's kind of a separate entity. Victor's kind of running things pretty much, got things under control. Uh, I, I don't think we do, but I wouldn't be opposed to do it if somebody had a different opinion.
Think you're hearing no different opinion on that one. All right, uh, Bylaw Review, um, I'm going to suggest Bob continue working with that.
Bids, right?
Trying to arm wrestle you for it, Bob.
That's all you. Uh, Cable Television. So I think this gets to the W C A T funding issue. Uh, this is one where actually W C A T, uh, Mike requested that you be, uh, assigned to this. I don't know if that was news to you.
Not really. I mean, I, 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 I know that we all know that we have an issue there.
You leave the room, you get a bad assignment.
You know, I like, I like the, the crew, yeah.
This is kind of, this is the one that's kind of defunct right now, right? They don't really do anything.
Yeah, we just appointed.
Oh, is this to that or is this on the subcommittee we were talking?
Well, so this is technically the C A T V committee, but I think, you know, I would think about this as also being the point person on the funding discussions. We, we've got to have a further discussion on the funding piece of it.
Okay.
Anybody want anymore?
No, I'm good.
Oh, I'd say save the food, you know, put it away.
You want to take it home for your kids?
Um, my kids won't be, please, like, they're.
If any, nobody wants it, I'll have it sent over to like fire.
Yeah, have it sent over to fire and police.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Jonathan, so you're talking more to the, to the committee that we said is kind of smaller than it used to be and maybe a little bit inactive.
Yeah, like my, my thinking is that we probably use the people that applied as the core of this working group around funding, but that, you know, I, I see this as more of that project than the, the C A T V committee as it currently stands.
We tend to be happy to help with too. Yeah, sure. Put me on that one.
Okay. Uh, Capital Planning is currently Mary Ann. I know you want to keep that.
Yeah, I like it.
All right. Uh, the MBTA Community's Working Group is Julie. I think it makes sense to keep her there. Uh, Commission on Disabilities. So Mike, that's currently you. Any takers for that one?
Wasn't going to wind up with half a dozen.
I may, I may have to rebalance some of these after we put the list together.
They offered to take a, a couple of ops, but maybe, maybe we'll just stick with what we've got after all this.
I mean, I, I can do that, but how, the, my issue is, is that I just can't be at a lot of the meetings.
I don't think they meet, I think they meet monthly.
Yeah, monthly.
Um, and I don't think the, so my expectation is not necessarily that any liaison is at every meeting, right? Like it's.
Yeah.
You know, you kind of, you know, you're there as a resource for them, you know, if you can go, you, great. If not, that's fine too. But yeah, no, my expect, I think for all of us, like the expectation is that if you're a liaison to X, you don't go to every single meeting unless you have the interest and desire.
I, I did it all by Zoom and it was short. It wasn't like going to a Z B A meeting or anything.
And, and the liaison, the staff that does that group, right?
Right, yeah.
I think that, like, I think what we'll get better at too is like liaison efforts, but also when, you know, the staff comes and talks about stuff, we should ask. we should ask him a question about, hey, these groups that you're the liaison to, any updates on? But he's, he's pretty good about updating. You know, if you ask him what that committee is doing and stuff, but I think that's also something that we can just make part of when they come in front of us.
Yep. That was disabilities.
I'll take that on if, you know, to, so that Mike doesn't end up with, you know, 10.
All right. Thanks, Anne. This is probably one that no one wants right now, Conservation Commission.
Have they ever had one before?
They haven't.
I kind of think they need one.
You did say you think they needed one, Julie.
Let's think about it.
Judicatory board.
They're in a judicatory board, right?
Well.
We can't really.
Like, I don't want us in there, but they also do, you know, they're working on the open space plan as an example, like they do some like policy related stuff that I think is relevant to what we do.
But I think it's better to have them to come to present to town council rather than us going to their meetings. And I think that that just could get us into an issue in terms of perception, in terms of what we're trying to achieve.
I think what I was sure we decided that was one of the three that would come to us quarterly, on comm, planning.
Yeah, I think planning and ZBA and Conservation Commission should be coming to us.
All right, Council on Aging currently, Mike. You have a lot at the front end of the, like, just putting that up.
Yeah, good. Nice group, very, very short, usually no more than an hour, by Zoom. Really, really nice people. So, I mean, I don't mind staying, but I'd say if somebody wants to pick it up, it's it's a good one to pick up.
When do they meet? Do you remember?
Oh, geez, I think, I think I did have some conflicts with our meetings. I'm trying to remember. I made some and I didn't make others. I'm sure it's on the website.
Twice a month they meet, right? I mean, twice a month?
Yeah, they're, they're once a month though.
Once a month?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay.
What committee was that?
Council on Aging. Next is Department of Public Works is currently Ed. I'm guessing you want to keep that?
Absolutely. Although I will say that a lot of people are pointing to my, like, being listed as liaison on the websites for everything from roads to their water bills. And so I'm.
Heavy, heavy, heavy as the, the man who, Ed wears the crown.
So I've been very surprised at how much people have picked up on liaison title there, but yeah.
All right. Next on here is our nascent but not yet existent Economic Development Committee. Any takers for that one?
I'd be interested in doing that.
All right. Anyone else interested?
I'd be interested in that.
All right. Do you guys want to fight it out?
Oh, you want more? Oh, let Ed have it. I thought you wanted more than one. No, no, Ed can, Ed can, Ed is doing a great job, so.
Okay.
I'd be happy to have both of us on, it doesn't matter to me.
I'm going to put you as the liaison. I'm going with what what my old boss used to say, you want to have like one neck to ring for anything like that, but obviously, Anne, please stay involved. Actually, I, the, when we set up the committee, did we have two town council slots on it?
At least one, but.
Okay. So actually then, I'm going to put both of you on that. Oops, what did I just do?
So that is kind of a conflict with ours?
Environmental Sustainability, Julie, I'm assuming you want to keep that.
Which one?
Environmental Sustainability will be Julie. FinCom will be me. Fire Department, this was one I know you guys talked about switching.
Well, I talked to Julie about going to police and switching from fire to police. Did you, were you interested in fire?
I would, I would be interested if if you're giving it up and somebody else doesn't want it.
All right. I think you've got fire. Health and Human Services, Anne, I know you wanted to keep that.
Yeah.
Great. Historical Commission, Bob, you were interested in taking, I know you.
Ed? Yeah, we talked about, we talked about switching. I was going to take historical and he'll take veterans.
Okay. Housing Authority is currently Bob. I know, Mike, you expressed an interest in that one.
If if Bob's stepping off, I mean, we've got a lot going on with housing, so unless somebody want else wants it, I'd be wanting to do it.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, it's the first time they had a liaison. I think it's good to have so many different, especially because as we move into the housing stuff, having somebody else that knows.
Who took fire?
Mike took fire. I will send this to you.
Okay.
Doesn't Housing Authority, they'll meet it during the day?
Yeah, Wednesday, what Wednesday, the fourth Wednesday of the month at four o'clock in the afternoon, and their meetings are very short. They're done less than an hour. You can do it on Zoom, whether they use some different, I had a phone in last time. So you you can go.
You can go over to Lincoln.
Well, I went to the link. No, they, no, they, they weren't on Founder Street.
Okay.
Facility where there is where they meet.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Oh, Broadway.
Yeah, Crystal.
Yeah, yeah. I could do that, Anne, because I work from home a lot, four o'clock in the afternoon is.
Pretty much the end of the workday.
That's awesome.
Right there.
My tour of duty ends, it's at 3:30.
He's a state employee.
Federal employee, sorry.
Come on. We like to think we're.
Government work.
Got it. All right, Human Rights Commission currently Maureen.
Can we keep it, Maureen?
I can, if nobody wants it.
Okay. I might be interested. Let me think about that one. Now that Maria is not on it.
So that's, that's another one where I've, two years talking to Steve, a staff would be really helpful at that one. So we could, he can think about it, but it doesn't have a staffer and that's, it's just hard. They're just doing a lot of great work and that's burnout is real on that committee.
Yeah, yep. Inspection, so now we have a couple of departments, some in the I's in the alphabet, inspectional services and IT. Do we want liaisons for either of those? I know certainly on the IT side, I know Ed and I have had some kind of, you know, sort of had a, like an informal working group where we've met with Todd. I'm I'm happy to kind of keep doing that. I think like that, that's actually an area that, at least for me, is of of interest, the IT side.
They're just doing it as we've been doing. Begin, I think we're due for a meeting.
Yeah, they are. We are going to be having Todd come to a town council meeting later this summer just to give an update, but obviously, you know, with some redacting of sensitive information. All right. So not hearing a whole lot of interest of those. I'm going to leave those as no liaisons. And again, we'll, we'll work with them directly. The Master Plan Committee, Anne, I'm assuming you'll keep doing this until that winds up. Permanent Building is me. I'd like to keep that unless anyone wants to fight me for that one. Planning Board, we have had a, I was the liaison one year, though it's been a couple of years. We haven't had a liaison in the last year. Mike, I know you expressed some interest there.
I did, although Julie's been working with them a lot on the 48, haven't you?
Well, I mean, they're, they have one or two representatives on the 48, but I wouldn't say I'm going to Planning Board meetings.
But I thought that was one of the three that we don't want to win. I think, I think we stick.
Planning Board, ZBA and Concom.
Right.
I've got plenty. I don't need it.
Got it. Police is Bob. We talked through that. Rec Department. So this one, it feels like we do want a Rec Department liaison. I think my friend to the right here might have some interest.
Sure, I'll do that.
School Building Committee, so this one falls to the chair. So that was Maureen. That'll be me this year. School Committee, so I've been doing this for four years now. I am.
This whole building committee had two slots. The chair and then an appointed slot. I think when you look at the website.
So it has a chair, the chair is it, and then I'm actually a community member on it.
Okay.
So that, that's the, that's the the rub for that one.
Okay.
School Committee, so again, this one I've had for four years. I'm happy to keep doing it, but I've had it for a long time. So if anyone else is dying to do it, I'm happy to, happy to give it up, too.
How do you do that? Do you go, do you listen to their meetings or?
I I listen to most of them. I don't, I don't get to every meeting. And I, you know, there are parts of the meetings that I, you know, there are parts of the meetings that are kind of pro forma parts that I skip over. I I don't usually listen to the meetings live. And then I I do connect with Doug, you know, probably every couple of months, we have a, you know, a sit down meeting.
I assume I'm keeping wards. I know it's not a liaison.
That's what I have. Yes, I do have you as wards.
And I won't do school.
All right, I'll keep that. Traffic Advisory, Maureen, you requested that one.
Yeah, I, what I would really like, I'll, I'll take that one back. I like those meetings. But I feel that falls under the walkability, sort of, like that's going to be a big part of that, so.
Yep. Okay. Veterans, we talked about as Ed. Warren Signer, I don't know if anyone wants to fight you for that one, Bob.
Right up there with Bylaws Review Committee. Got it.
All right, WMGLD is Mike. Any takers for that one?
You want to keep that?
Either way, do you want it?
That feels like you do, Julie.
I do kind of like it. Can I take it from you?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we really focus on being better with dark skies compliance and like the brightness of like every like bulb that is installed on every building now is insane. So I think there needs to be, it's not like.
Street lamps you're talking about.
Not just street lamps, but everywhere, like.
I don't know that that's just MLD. I know Conservation's kind of dealt with that, too.
It's more like an awareness thing.
Yeah. It might be between ESC and MLD.
I think so, but somewhere we have to be like mindful of the fact that we're like illuminating at levels that are ridiculous.
Yep, okay.
All right.
What's going on with the solar park, too, and supposed to be able to buy shares in it?
The aggregate, yeah, the aggregated.
Yeah, that was, that was going to be on top of the building.
Well, they're going to be with us to appoint a new commissioner.
On the 26th, yep.
I was lining them up to ask these things.
Yeah.
All right.
I think they've been doing some great stuff.
Yeah, they've been doing really well.
With their power agreements or EV chargers and. Think that maybe we should have a bylaw for it.
Two more. Youth Council, so I'm going to give this one up. Julie expressed an interest, again, everyone's okay with that. And Zoning Board of Appeals, Anne, we had you listed as the liaison, though I didn't think we had a liaison to them this past year. But you were listed on the website, but we'll, we'll leave that as no liaison. And again, quarterly updates from them.
Yeah.
All right. I think I did a pretty exhaustive look. Is there anything that we're missing?
Yeah, I'll do school.
You'll do school committee? All right.
You got School Building Committee, you got Permanent Building Committee.
Well, those are basically the same thing. All right. Thanks, Bob.
And Jonathan, let's just have Ed doing Economic Development.
Okay.
And I can assist where needed, so.
So I think if there, if it was one, if memory serves, if there are two positions on it, we can talk about it, Anne, if you want to take on that second position, once we get that committee up and running. All right. Anything else? Any final comments, feedback, requests for the year? First of all, I know this has been a long evening, Anne, especially for you, but I I feel like we've accomplished a lot. I, you know, once we kind of get this on paper, I I think we've got a really solid roadmap for the year and I'm really, you know, happy with everyone kind of pitching in on that and and coming up with something. Thank you for the the work and the thought and the discussion today, but anything else before we close again in terms of feedback, ideas, suggestions for the year, things that we can do better in terms of how we operate as a council, things that we should think about differently?
The only thing I'll add is the charter, under the charter, the Charter Review Committee only meets every 10 years and we don't have any repeat, which we could have a new group. So we should explore, going back to the Board of Health, we can explore how we can do it ourselves.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
We don't have to wait till we have a Charter Review Committee. It's not like bylaws, which meets every five years. They only meet once a decade, so.
And we should incorporate, like, and bring in Board of Health into the conversation, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I would just like to have that programmatic element, like committing whatever you want to call it for Albion, whether it's an offshoot of rec or whatever the case is, but I do think that's going to be an important piece.
So I I think that's something where we need to have some further discussion on how we want to conceptualize that. I think we should get Dan's perspective as well.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I had sat in on a lot of the ACE meetings four years ago. I know Maureen, you were a liaison at one point, so maybe, maybe we kind of agenda that for a future discussion.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Not for time, but I, I, I'm not envisioning the ACE 2.0.
No, no.
It's entirely different than that, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think you're, you're like concept, conceptually, you're spot on in terms of its programming. It's not operations and building maintenance and capital planning, like we, we have people who do that for the town.
Exactly, yeah.
And Jonathan, since it'll take some time, Anne had mentioned Q1 for the hiring of the new position for strategic development, I would just ask Steve to, you know, really put that, get that one started in terms of advertising and interviewing.
Yep.
So we can, because we've got all this going on at once and then we could have Erin doing her thing and this person doing his or her thing and helping us with all these other things we're talking about. What is it that we can get as a housing choice community? Could they assist in the development of the trust? Could, you know, really get their feet wet right from the beginning of some of this stuff that we're really, you know, starting, starting up on it. Some startup projects, be a good time to bring that person in and get them started.
And don't forget that by sometime in the fall, we're going to be appointing somebody from this council to be, to be sitting on the Board of Trustees for the trust funds. That's another big.
Yep.
That's more than a liaison assignment. That's a voting member.
Yeah, that's a, that's a hefty piece of work.
And then the transportation, are we going to put together a transportation committee or are we in a? Is that what it's called, the one that deals with everything?
Transit. The other towns have it, so Steve.
Micro Transit, yeah.
Can I have you look? I know Bedford has one. I think Melrose has one.
Two, or is that a?
Stonem does have one.
I feel like.
I think Andover.
Framingham might have one, so we can look around and see, but and find and find and then just kind of, yeah, we can work on that over the summer, so maybe kick it off in the fall.
And that would be, that, that would be a good, that would be a good place to have a staff liaison.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, you know, the bike pit plan is going to recommend that the town have a bike pit, an official committee, and I think it should just talk into this.
Yep.
Yeah.
The other thing, just, just, just as an asterisk, as we, I know Steve's taking a big sigh of relief of the budget just ending, but next year's budget, we should be getting some more money from.
National Bureau?
No, what's the law that we, the ballot question?
Oh.
Oh, the Fair Share.
Fair Share Amendment.
Yep.
So like.
I, I hope that you're right.
I think I'm right. We will be getting, I don't know how much, hopefully, hopefully as much as they predicted. For education and transportation, right? And so I just want to be mindful of watching that because I don't know how they're going to, are they just going to give like towns more money? Is it going to be just part of our funding? Is it, is it going to be applying for stuff? I don't think they figured it out yet. But I, but it's a lot, you know, they're, they're predicting a lot of money.
Yeah.
I hope.
So I, I will say, I think the House and Senate versions of the budget have different ways in which they're treating the, the the Chapter 70 formula that that reflects some use of those funds.
Okay.
It's not, at least for sort of what's in both budget proposals, it's not like hugely impactful, but you know, there are some differences there that seem to reflect kind of their, each chamber's perspective on how they're allocating those dollars. But I don't think, and this is just from the update we got at the Fiscal Policy Committee meeting for MMA, I don't think that there's a huge amount of consensus yet as to sort of how those funds get allocated across different priorities, like, you know, one chamber is putting more in transportation than the other, you know, it's, it's still a little bit of a blank page.
Yeah, just something to be mindful of that maybe, if it's not the cherry sheet, if there's money, we'll be able to go after.
I hope it's on the cherry sheet.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's probably the most equitable way to do it, right? But I'd, I'd gone, I'd gone to an event with all these like community college presidents and they're like, but we want the money too. And I was like, oh, if you start giving it to colleges. Colleges, right? Then I was like, there's just less and less, like, or, you know, if you give it to highways or you fix bridges, that, but like, they're talking about fixing bridges, like, do we have some bridges in town that?
Yes, we do.
The money, right? And so, so, so maybe this is also, as, I haven't looked at this year's budget proposals, but is that, you know, is this something where we kind of think about what we would use the money for and start making pitches to our delegation? So they're aware, right? Like.
Right.
They know, but I think to just, like, be pretty forward about it is a good.
My, my, my bet is that we're, we're going to say, yeah, that's 50 grand more we got.
Really?
Half of the people that are, that are leaving the state as a primary residence as a result of the tax, too.
Yes. So we'll lose those.
Only Tom Brady.
No, he, he left the state, well.
He was turned coat along with.
All right, any, anything else for today, or shall we take a motion to adjourn?
Move, hearing nothing, move to adjourn.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, God, we need to do a roll call because.
Sorry.
I think Julie.
I think you can do it with.
Mike. Bob. Ed. Maureen. And me is, yes. All right, thank you so much, Ann. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye, Ann.
Hi, everyone.
Take care.
It's like 1:00 AM there.